Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monroe County Council's April 22nd Earth Day of 2025. I will now call this meeting to order, and I would like to recognize for the dais, we have Counselors Liz Fiedal. Wow, I am blanking. Kate Wilts, Trent Decker, myself, we have Peter Iverson and David Henry. So, we will go ahead and get started. With all those that are able to do so, please stand while reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. Thank you. We will go ahead and move on with the adoption of tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any types of changes that they would like to make to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam President, I have a change.
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to table the Health Department Items 7A and B to our May 13th meeting, just because we haven't received updated contract confirmation yet.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling Item 7A to the May 13th meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, ayes have it.
And also Item B as well.
Okay. All right, so we will table Items 7A and B. Are there any other changes to the agenda? All right. So, we will go ahead and vote on our agenda as amended. So, all those in favor of tonight's agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, ayes have it. Now, I am going to look to my council colleagues and put everybody to task, because we do have quite a bit of items on our agenda here. So, I am going to ask that we make sure that we are sticking to the topics that we should, when we get to those items, to just stick to the topics. If you need to ask additional questions, we can ask those via email. But because we have a lot, and there's probably going to be a heavy discussion on some of these items, we just don't want to prolong tonight's meeting. So, I just want to ask my colleagues just to make sure to keep us to task as well. So, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, next, we have Item Number 4, which is Public Comment. So, anybody that would like to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, you can come forward to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room. You'll have a limit of three minutes. Go ahead and sign in. And if you are on Teams and you also have a public comment on items not on the agenda, you can signify by doing so by raising your hand via Teams. And first, we will come to the NatU Hill Room, and go ahead.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, but I'm more speaking to you and our audience as a Monroe County resident. If those of you who witnessed or was at the last Board of Commissioners last Thursday on the downzoning, the word "community" got thrown around a little bit on what was community, who was more community. And I just, you know, I'm thinking about this, and I don't really think about the boundaries of Aliceville, the unincorporated area of Bloomington-Stansville, the same way a lot of us do. And tonight, since the jamboree at the Bloomington Junior League Baseball Association, the BG LBA was canceled on Saturday, the opening day is tonight, Tuesday, and we, my son Duncan plays in the minors, ages nine to 10, the first year of kid pitch. And I was looking at the 12-person roster, and what did I notice on the 12-man roster? Not one from the same school. There's Lighthouse Christian on there, there's Montessori, there's two from Edgewood, there's somebody homeschooled, not one from the same school. This is a community event, and we are a community here. Us against them attitude, I don't think is productive and one that I think we need to sort of cease doing a little bit. The other thing is, I will be there Tuesdays and Thursdays from 7:00 to 8:45, rooting on the Holden Wealth Management Green Team, a fine Chamber member. So, anytime anybody from the community, Chamber member or not, wants to talk to me, want to rap about politics, sports, anything, I will be there. So, just look for me on those Tuesdays and Thursdays at Winslow Sports Park, that's in Bloomington here, with the entire community joining in. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and go Duncan. All right. Anybody else that would like to make a comment on items not on the agenda? Looks like we have another person here. So, go ahead and sign in, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for letting me talk. My name is Lee McKinley. I was born in this county, raised here, practiced medicine here for the last 38 years. I'm still a resident. I'm here to talk about funding of the Health Department specifically. I gave Peter Iverson some handouts prior to this meeting for him to look at. You may get copies or may not, but it refers to a public memorandum from the Monroe County Auditor dated December 4th of 2024, informing the Indiana State Health Department that the reason for zero levy funding in 2024 was to, quote, "right-size the department's accounts." The auditor also gave the opinion that despite no county funding from levy, that we had spent monies from the state in a legal manner consistent with health-first legislation, which requires over 60% to be used for long-term infrastructure and programming. The Monroe County Department, Health Department, had to request a copy of this memorandum from the state. It did not come from our own people in the county. The health-first legislation was a response to Indiana's poor ranking among U.S. states. It was about 40th overall, and it was 46th as far as public health spending per person based on our population. It has third-world outcomes in maternal and fetal deaths, loss of life expectancy, poor access to primary care, and substance-use treatment. The money was not to be used for routine county services, but as an investment to improve our base funding, modernize our governance structure, and recruit an adequate workforce. During a recent rainstorm, I stood in the men's restroom of the Health Services Building and found a river of water flowing into a trash can, flood damage in a crowded basement, and a second story under roof but unused due to lack of funding. To host an open house for this county council, the board members had to pitch in their own money to buy refreshments. Our space for public board meetings is a 12-by-15-foot room, and at this last meeting, there were 17 people crowded into that room, some of them standing due to lack of space. We needed a reasonable savings account in the Health Department to buffer the ups and downs in state and federal funding. Some counties are now using an LLC foundation model, in fact, that supersedes their county Health Department, to accept gifts and to ask for donations to the Health Department to help improve the financial situation. The board that I'm on is composed of several very talented people, including nurses, dentists, physicians, biomedical scientists, and public health professors, all ready to take on the task of moving us into the 21st century. We have no other county leadership addressing the deficiencies in our ambulance service, community recruitment of the estimated 120 hospital nurses that are needed, 15 more dentists, and at least 25 primary care physicians.
And I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to make public comment on items not on the agenda? Again, you can come here to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand via Teams. And I'm not seeing any takers on Teams, and I'm also not seeing any takers in the audience. So, we will go ahead and keep moving forward. Next item is department updates. So, this is for departments to come in and talk about your department, and those are usually 10 minutes per department. So, if there's anybody that would like to make a comment on departmental updates, you can go ahead and come to the lectern or raise your hand via Teams. Everybody? All right. So, don't see any of that, so we can check that off the list. And now, we will go to Item Number 6, which is the Consent Agenda Items.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items for April 22nd. A, the March 11th and 25th County Council's summary minutes as presented, and B, the Employee Services Department's request and fund 4700-0000 self-insurance, the creation of two account lines, 39801 FTS clinic payments, and 39806 FTS ER paid life slash CI, which is critical illness.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. And I do want to back up for reference. We do have Counselor Hawke that has joined us, and we have all seven of us here to conduct tonight's business. So, any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda items?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I see that we're adding account lines, but do we have some place there, the dollar amount that's going to be going into there?
When they ask for additional account lines to the budget, they don't have to ask for additional appropriations if they're moving internally. So, no, we have no record of the amounts that are going to be transferred into those lines.
I think it'd be really appropriate if in future, if there's new account lines needed, that we would see where they're moving the money from and so forth.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, can we go ahead and go to public comment? If you make, want to have a public comment, you can come forward to the lectern here in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand via Teams. And seeing none, since all seven of us are here, we can go ahead and approve the consent agenda by voice vote. So, all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. And since we have tabled Items 7A and 7B, we can go ahead and go to Item Number C, or Item 7C.
That's correct. Counsel, I move to approve the request to amend the 2025 salary ordinance and fund 1161-0000 local public health services fund, account line 10177, Health Services Director, from a PAT-D 35-hour to an EXE-A 40-hour position. As a reminder, this is the second reading for this request due to a lack of unanimous vote on April the 8th.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. We have Ms. Kelly here in front of us. Hello.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
So, at the last meeting, we were making the request to increase the classification level of the Health Services Director position. So, some reasons for behind this are for the extensive amount of duties that this position is going to oversee within the department, as well as the requirements that we are looking to be able to recruit a nurse to fill this position.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, considering we had lots of discussion with that, now, I actually, let me pull up something here, because I want to go back and ask the question that is similar to, or that has something, I believe, to do with this, with the D I S position. The email that we received regarding like the April 30th deadline, can you speak to that? Because I just want to make sure whatever we are needing to do with positions, council won't get blamed for not doing something when we have no idea what deadlines we are facing. So, I just want to give you the opportunity to speak to that.
I really, really appreciate you giving me this opportunity to speak on this. I honestly am not sure about the April 30th date, so, and I've been trying to play catch-up. I've been really busy in a lot of other meetings, but what I can say is that this is crucial. We have the funds already set aside that the state has approved for these D I S services in this position. The Board of Health approved that budget. We've already pulled the self-insurance for that position. We have the funds available to pay for that position in HFI. Now, I started this conversation at the beginning of the year, and it was actually with Counselor Wilts, and she was very collaborative with me. We brainstormed, we were trying to strategize. How are we going to adjust to these changes in the district and these changes in the grant requirements? So, at that point in time, for months, we have been working on, how do we get ahead of this? How do we make sure that we have the positions and the people trained and placed, ready to provide these services? So, we have the HFI funds available. When there was a transition in our liaisons, we started running into issues with wanting to have the state fund the additional, fund all positions. That started creating some additional challenges on the Health Department side, because that was not the original intention that we had going into 2025. But I reached out to the state, I asked for additional grant funding. They are very supportive of this work that we do and the Health Department, and they said, sure, we, what do you think you'll need? I gave them an estimated $60,000. They said, send us a budget revision, we'll work with you on that. So, I came back and said, okay, we have a grant amendment supposed to be coming, but we still need this position. Please let us use these HFI dollars, whether it's for this short-term period, so that we can post a position, start the recruitment process. Training for these D I S positions take at least three to six months, and then they have another three to six months of supervised services. So, let us get started on this now. If we receive the grant, then we can do corrections on the backend. So, one way or another, like, I got this, I'll figure it out, but we have to have these positions, we have to be providing these services. We are covering 16 counties, and we only have two employees right now covering those services. We have one position posted, we're starting the recruitment process for that, but again, like I said, once we even get someone hired, we have another three to six months of just strictly training time. And we still don't have the other additional position even, that's been even heard. This is the first time I've been able to come here even and make this request to even say, please work with us on this, so that we can make sure that we have the staffing that we need to provide these services.
Thank you. Yeah.
Ms. Kelly, I voted in favor this last time, but something you just said really concerns me, and I'm going to be real honest, it kind of bothers me a little bit. You're saying that this is the first time tonight that you've been able to come in here and talk about this? We talked about it last time in the meeting. Am I wrong?
The additional position.
This is a difference. They switched topics, I think.
Okay.
Yes. And that's what I was going to clarify. The motion on the floor is for the Health Services Director. The position that she is talking about asking for an additional was Item Number 7A.
Yeah, and that's, that's my fault.
But that's been tabled. But we can go back and...
Okay.
So, that's my fault. I accidentally, I totally messed up on that one, so I'll own up to that one. That's my fault. Yes, Counsel Irvin.
I could ask a question. So, last time we talked, we talked about the Health Services Director, and this body approved the job description. And so, have you been able to post that job? Have you been able to talk to applicants? Have you been able to, you know, work with folks that might be interested in this Health Services Director position?
Well, my understanding is the position is not still complete and ready to post.
Right.
Because of, yeah, because of this vote, yeah, I understand. All right, thank you.
Point of information I actually don't understand, the position exists, it could be posted. The question is the salary ban that you want to advertise. Is that, can someone, can anyone clarify that?
The position has been approved and accepted and put into the salary ordinance as a PAT-D 35 hours, which they, the Health Department could advertise at that, but what you guys are now looking at is changing the classification, which would be for salary. So, this is a salary discussion with regards to that, but the position itself is on the salary ordinance as a PAT-D.
35 hours.
35 hours. 35 hours, that is correct.
Counsel Henry, did you have any additional?
Thank you for that. No, I do not.
Okay, Counsel Hawke?
Yes. The last we spoke, I had hoped that you were going to go ahead and advertise for this position at the PAT-D level, because a lot, I understand, it was advertised in December, and you didn't get a lot of feedback, but then we, that's not unusual, not to get a lot of feedback when you're looking for employees around Christmas time. And so, I had asked, and really hoped that you were going to go ahead and advertise for it, and it's concerning to me that you didn't realize that you even have this in your budget. I mean, of course, you had it in your budget, you already advertised once for it. And so, this is asking us to take it from one classification that the people that we pay to tell us what the classification should be, reviewing, and went back to him, them, how many times, still came back at PAT-D. So, your request of us is to go beyond that and change, even though you've not advertised in the last however many months for this position. I find that difficult, and I find it disturbing that for whatever reason, you didn't seem to know that you could.
Go ahead.
I would not, I did not think there was an expectation that this would be advertised when she was in a sort of a limbo as to what she was going to be able to offer in terms of salary and what the classification was. We had a split vote. It was, I mean, it's, I had no idea there was an expectation that it would be advertised without that information.
Ms. Kelly, did you want to address what Counsel Hawke mentioned?
I would agree that my understanding was we were coming back to have a final understanding of what the position would be salary-wise and hours-wise. I think it would be especially challenging to post a position at 35 hours and then change that to 40 hours, and I think that that would cause some confusion, and I don't, and I did, I did not realize that we were done having the conversation to complete the position.
Yeah, so, I did want to pick up on the fact that I did vote against this last time, and it is my intention to vote against it again tonight. We did approve the job description. WIS did bring this back at 34, 5 hours PAT-D, which is where the other managers are in the, in the organization chart, excuse me. And something that, that Council Member Hawke alluded to was, this is indeed the third time that WIS has evaluated this position, and all three times, it came back as 35 hours PAT-D. I see, even when we tweaked the job descriptions, it came back as 35 hours PAT-D three times. So, I think that where we're at right now with the 35 hours PAT-D, same as the other managers in that job description, I think that's exactly where this needs to be, and I'll be voting that way tonight.
All right, thank you. Looking over here to the left, anybody got any questions or comments?
I think it's totally confusing, if I must say so myself. I'm sad to hear that there was confusion about what was done last time. I'm, I'm not sure how that could have been clarified between now and then, but I do think that, you know, and I voted in favor of it last time, but I think that we are still, I voted in favor of it last time, basically, to bring it back again, because I think we're still not done, in my opinion, at the State House with where everything is at there. And it distresses me that we would be making a decision to have it raised at a higher level with that in mind. I mean, I know it seems like the property tax impact may be there, and we know kind of what that is, but even that, I haven't seen all the figures for that. But now with the state budget shortfall, which is a whole different set of money issues, how will that impact us then with that? So, and then, you know, I think, I wondered about the position itself, as I looked at the, again, at the organizational chart. It shows, it looked to me like that this position was going to be the supervisor for a D I S person. Is that correct for someone? So, does the supervisor, if you're hiring for someone, do you need that D I S certification or credentials, whatever it's called, for them to supervise somebody else or to fill in for that level? I mean, I'm totally confused. I'll admit, I don't know the field, but I'd like to know what the requirement is for someone that would be hired if they're expected to do that, and would they come in with that certification to do that work? Does that make any sense?
Yes, that does make sense. Okay. So, they do need to be able to have the knowledge and experience in the background to understand those D I S services. One of the purposes of having a nurse in this position would also be able to have someone there on site, so if we need to administer injection treatments, that we would have someone to do that. But the expectation is, and it's actually one of my reasons for really just trying to strongly advocate for having this position at a different classification, because it needs to have knowledge and background and experience about all of those different core services. And that's a lot. It's a lot, because they're going to have to be supervising and ensuring, are those services being carried out in compliance with the law? Are they meeting their key performance indicators? Are we collecting the data and submitting the data that's required to the state? So, it's a lot of responsibility compared to a lot of our other positions, and that's really, again, why, why I'm trying to advocate for the change.
Okay. I will go to, since we're already over here, I'll go to Counselor Wilts, and then Counsel Henry next.
Thank you. You mentioned that this, and I think last time, you mentioned that this position has administrative duties, clearly, but also clinical responsibilities, and that's kind of what makes this unique. Are there other positions, any other positions in your health, in the department, that have both administrative and clinical duties like this?
Not that I can think of right now, and so, this position is very unique, which, again, I think is why it would fall more into that, SO, EXE, some kind of different category. But I want to explain that part of the purpose of that is because, otherwise, I'd be coming here asking for two positions. So, I, I mean, we're trying to be able to get what we need and figure out how we can work together to get what we need and, you know, have these positions that can cover these services. So, it's a different position.
Another thing that we talked about last time was the idea that my vote was kind of unofficially contingent on the concept of you removing an equivalent amount to the fiscal impact, the difference between these two classifications from your budget. Have you given that any thought since then? And if so, what are you thinking in terms of what you might be able to remove to help support this elevation in classification?
Sure. So, I would say that in-house transfers, we already have the documentation worked up to cover this position. It's already covered, you know, this year, and I can say as... And I can say as far as when I submit the budget to the state for next year, I have to plug in money somewhere to fill that budget, right? But for example, this year in our HFI, we have money for event space. That's not something we have to have. We have money around eighty thousand dollars, if I'm remembering correctly. Actually, I brought a copy of the budget with me. For vehicles, we're not going to need three new vehicles again next year. So we have a lot of money to play with, and as far as, we, we still don't know exactly what's going to happen with the changes, but right now, this year is a really big program development year. So we have a lot of money that's invested to starting new programs up, getting supplies that we needed, starting our inventory. We're not going to need that same amount of funding next year because we're going to be carrying out the programs and the services that we have established. We're providing a large amount of money strictly in funds for supplies. So we have a really big initiative trying to address hypertension, being able to screen and provide blood pressure monitors for hypertensive individuals to take home. So perhaps we have to scale that back by ten thousand dollars, or we can't support fifteen thousand dollars' worth of life jackets. I want this council to trust me that I, I can figure this out, like, one way or another, like, we got this, like, we can, we can shift, we can move things around. And, and I think that was the intention with the state, that we can tailor these budgets how our community needs the services to be provided.
Thank you. Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to respect our time this evening and not go on too much on my vote, but I do think that we need to get some things into the air this evening. I thank you, Ms. Kelly, for being here. First, I agree with my colleague, Counselor Iverson, on the recommendations we have from WIS in terms of the position as it exists in our org chart. I think within your own department, as was demonstrated in the last meeting, that to elevate the Health Service Director position, which had thirteen FTEs, I believe, two of which were interns, to a different position, even within your own department creates inequities in the director level. When we look at the Environmental Health Service Director position, I believe they had nine to eleven FTEs in the similar space. We have to, as a county council, address the audience that is in the room, as well as our county government. I know we like to think the governor watches our meetings, but the truth is county employees do, and so do directors in the community and, and the county here. And the message we send when we make adoptions to our process is that any department with a director-level PAT could now be looking to say, well, why don't we elevate our person's E X E as well? We can come up with all the rationalizations. I think it's important to be, to have the integrity of our process with the budget. I know it's very frustrating for some folks in the room, but this council has, under Title 36, and I won't make Mr. Roddy look up Title 36 for us, the fiscal authority and oversight to conduct on all of the boards and commissions and the departments of the county government. It's our job. We have to ask these questions. And as my colleagues have pointed out already, we're looking at some incredibly difficult fiscal times in, in coming into the community. I want to also address the HFI program itself. House Bill one ten, one thousand one was on the floor today and was going through amendments, and as you had indicated to us in the last meeting, is going to be experiencing a fifty million dollar cut across the state. And that means that whatever we have in resources, we need to really be scrutinizing this to make sure it gets into our community and is used in the right ways, and I think those are questions that we're well entitled to ask. I want to maybe address the comment that you had made related to the liaison process, which admittedly, I'm a newer member of the council, but I'm, but only Marty or Councilmember Hawke outranks me in terms of experience with county government, as I had served in the county government in two thousand and five. And I learned how to do liaison roles from the late Sophia Travis and Commissioner Ursula Kiesling, who held our feet to the fire on being accountable for every hour we were spending in county government, and I guess that's where I take my cues. In terms of being a liaison, I view our role as not being a lobbyist, but being the oversight we need in the community to, to make sure that we're spending these dollars correctly. It is a comment that I intimated to Dr. Reiterband when I took on the liaison role for the department. Having said all that, and given the position that we have here today, I stand by my vote for three reasons. The first reason is that we, as a county council, has passed a resolution saying that we're going to suspend our PAC process in the light of this state legislation moving through and additional cuts. I think we need to stick with the resolution we passed, which means if we open this door for exceptions, we'll be doing this for the rest of the year. So it's either serious or it's not, and I encourage my colleagues to consider that vote. Secondly, as it's been brought up in multiple meetings to get to this place of deciding the Health Service Director position, this council has asked multiple times for a work breakdown structure. I believe that you have indicated you do a lot of administrative work for the HFI program. I have no idea if that's a hundred and fifty percent of your time that necessitates a second position. The County Health Department used to have a deputy administrator at an EXE level. Penny Cottle had that position before she was elevated to health commissioner, health administrator. Maybe that's the position we need to reinvent and bring back into, into the position, if that's really what you're looking for as a deputy, to exist in executive roles. I think I've said all I need to on this, but I, but I think that my vote can't possibly change. We've made our case. We need to, and we need to continue to be good fiscal stewards of what's put before us. I know that is an answer that no one wants to hear in the room that is looking for a solution here, but ultimately, we, we have, we are obligated to the public, and we're obligated to the county employees and the workforce, so we're trying to make sure we raise all votes equitably in the county. I'm still a no on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke.
Yes, I, I do agree with what you have to say there, Councilmember Henry, because we are representing not just the Health Department, but the Highway Department, the Auditor's Office, the Treasurer, everybody. And, and they do watch, believe me, and they'll let us know if they think that we've, we tell them one thing and use something else, and they'll know it, and they let us know it, and they should. I mean, they need to make sure that we are following the rules. We're not breaking the rules, but I just wanted, because, so my support or of making sure we follow the rules is not going to waver, hopefully, in the future. I really think we ought to give some real thought to whether or not we're even going to continue on with KSA until we get our feet solid on the ground to see what's going on with the budgets. But one of the things I thought I, would be of interest, I received a, a message today, just not long ago, from Anton Neff, you might know him, and he said, please, please, we need to keep an eye because they, you know, the state is up there cutting right now in house, in the budget bill, and this funding is in that budget bill. And even though they'd already, it was going to be less this year, you know, for next year than this year, now they're thinking maybe more. And so they were saying, everybody get, get in touch with your representatives and see. But they may, it may be too late because they're going to do what we're going to have to do soon, is we're going to have to start figuring out what we cut, what can we do? The other thing is, under this bill, if, if part of what I had read was that only ten percent of it could be used, this revenue, for administrative costs and the other for, for programs. So they are watching, and they don't want as much money going out for administrative costs. And also, it's, it, they must be residents of the state of Indiana, and they must be citizens. So all of that might change how we, I, I don't know. That's, until this House bill is finished, it's all, you know, it's all, hopefully, we'll know by Thursday. They're hoping to be done by Thursday. Then we might know something. But even if there was plenty of money there, just because there's money there, there's no reason why we should treat one department any different than the others.
Thank you. Anybody over here? Counselor Wilt?
Two things that I think are relevant here is that, in my opinion, putting this position into an SO is utilizing the system we were given by WIS, because part of the directive in the study was that when you have something that doesn't fit, it, we have this, this SO position, and it should be used fairingly. I wholeheartedly believe that. But the fact that this position is going to be advertised as requiring or preferring a, an, a nursing degree, as well as the experience and abilities related to administering and directing programs, I feel like this is a solid case, and I do, I do strongly feel that we are still, this is the second point, still reorganizing this department. And by we, I mean you, I'm not doing it, but Ms. Kelly has spent several years trying to create a vision of, of how her department is, is going to work, and I don't necessarily agree with everything that's, all the changes that have gone on. But I do respect that as, as the health administrator with the backing of the Health Board, they're making a decision that is part of a bigger plan and a bigger picture for organizing and running that department. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else, any other comments? All right. Counselor Deckard?
Thank you. I think both nights on this one, I've held off, and I've listened to my colleagues and thought about it. This is a tough issue, and I think that that is reflected in the division of the vote last time. I think it's also reflected in some of the comments that have been made up here. And one thing that I, I wrangled back and forth with a number of things related to this request, and I think counselors have all made tremendously decent points at this. So I'll tell you where I'm going to end up on this. Number one, I think about this Health Department, and I think about the Health Board, and I think about where we've been, and I think about where we're going. And sometimes, for me, which anyone watching will know, the bigger picture kind of gets me where I'm going. And here's what I mean by that. When I look backwards over the last ten years for our Health Department, I have watched as they've had to go in ambiguous, difficult situations and make sense of them to try to get somewhere, and hence, we got through a pandemic, right? And a lot of people have come and gone in that time, and, and we got through that. I look forward in this and with, for our Health Department, and I see a lot of really massive challenges in the future. I'd love to be able to tell everyone associated with it that your job is going to get easier, but I'm going to bet my mortgage tonight it's going to get harder. It's going to get worse, and I think there's a couple of factors that are factoring into that. I don't need to list them all, but I think it's going to get harder, and it's going to get worse. And by the way, when I'm talking, I'm talking, of course, our administrative, but I'm talking to our Health Board, and I want them to hear it too. One of the reasons we have a Health Board is because ultimately, I think the thought under Indiana law at the time, because we could talk a lot about what legislators are thinking, I think back in the day, they wanted to make sure medical people were making decisions and not always politicians. I think here we jump into this because we're figuring out a job to help them do it. I do, I, 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 I offer this, that I believe the Health Department is going to have to do amazingly harder things and figure it out as they go in the future, just as they have in the past. And I think that we similarly are going to have tough challenges. Counselor Hawke mentioned earlier that we will have to start cutting and wrangling our hands and doing that, and there'll be a little bit of that for sure, and I bet you there will actually be a lot of that. But one of the things we'll have to do, because the legislature has convinced everyone that they're giving them a huge property tax relief, is we'll have to make a decision, we, the city, I don't know how the townships or the schools do it, they might just be left in their own boat, but we'll have to figure out how we get more revenue. And when I, when a politician says, figure out how we get more revenue, what I mean to that, to the public watching, is the state has left us with the bag, and that means that people up here have to make a decision about raising your taxes. Why? Because you have to be able to do what you do in, in life, and this, in local governments where it's real. And so similarly, in addition to the property tax issues, is we have the health funding cuts that are arising up there, because the state has decided that they took two years where they're going to fund healthcare in a robust way, but now they wish to go back to where they were, and that is the state ranking very low on health metrics, and the state suffering very low on health metrics. And all that is to say is I believe that our Health Department's got to punch its way out of that. Now, part of what you saw tonight, and what you've seen in previous nights, is people asking tough questions of our Health Administrator and our Health Board. And I think they're doing that because in the past, I've heard people say, well, things happen, and you guys don't ask tough questions, you didn't know about this. I've even heard people within that program say, well, this happened and council wasn't there. Well, council's here now. I'm going to vote for this again tonight. I'm going to stick to my original vote. I do it with the kind of the challenge moving forward. I think if there's cuts to be made on your end and you figure out what you're doing, I wouldn't cut program outreach. In fact, I'd figure out how to do more of that. And for Health Department workers, you're not, you're not, what I'm going to say is not going to be popular, but I think that you've got to figure out how to make that service of every hour of the day really, really, really count if we truly believe in these programs and want to get it done. I will support this position, but I do think the days ahead are going to be tougher, they're going to be harder, the challenges are going to be different, just like in 2018, we weren't thinking about COVID, and then we suddenly were, and that will be that lot in life. As far as just generally, for folks that are thinking about, well, what's the county and others going to have to do to figure out how to fund these things? I'll tell you, hand wrangling will be there, but we'll all have to be problem solvers on how to do it, and sometimes the word problem solving means figuring out where revenue comes from. Because while the state will be done here in a couple of days, and they'll all go off and kind of hide, maybe they should watch our meetings, because this is how it happens. We will have to figure it out, because we will have to face the same people that have called us about this very issue. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. I'll make one comment before we go ahead and move on to public comments, so we can keep going. I've thought a lot about this since we dealt with this a couple of weeks ago, and I've thought a lot about our PAC process. And I will say that, yes, although there is, you know, I mean, PAC has done a lot and, and with WIS, but I do think that it has had some issues, and we know that we've had other departments that have come here, and we have overwritten what WIS has recommended. And I dare to say, the Recorder's Office, or not, excuse me, not Recorder's Office, the Assessor's Office, when they had some things that came to us with PAC. I also would like to task us to say, and I talked about this last year, when something similar brought up to us, if we're going to maybe look at potentially listening to a department and going above what PAC or WIS is saying, then I do think that we need to have some type of rubric and that will allow us to say, this is why this criteria fit if we are going to do this. So I task anybody on PAC to be able to do that, and would love to join the force to be able to do that. The other thing that I want to mention about is, I'm not going to go into too much here because it's already been said, we continue to see that the state continues to make cuts, 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 cuts. Obviously, they got some cuts that they got to make. They figured out after SB one that they too have to make some cuts. So I, I say all that to say, and listen to all the discussions and all the conversations that we had leading up to this, and folks have even said it tonight, you know, we have other departments and other employees are watching. Yeah, we do, and I hope that when we are having this type of conversation again, when another department comes to us, I also will task my council colleagues to say the hard things that we're saying right now to other upcoming departments when they come to us for a same particular ask, because I know people are probably watching. I'm pretty sure somebody will probably come and ask us a question. So if we're going to say no to this, then we are going to have to say no to every single thing, because then it looks like we're picking and choosing who we say yes to, who we say no to, and folks that are sitting in here in the hot seat will feel some type of way. And I'm sure you definitely feel some kind of way sitting here. So I really hope that folks sitting here talking out of one side of their mouth will continue to talk to that same side when other departments have to come forward and say that. I say all that to say that I was a yes vote a couple of weeks ago, and I am going to vote no tonight. Again, my philosophy is we're going to have the conversation with other people. This is a conversation that I'm going to have with every single person that comes in here, because the state, love them or hate them right now, whatever you want to say with that, they have put us in a very difficult situation. Local municipalities are put to task in really hard pickle right now. So that's where I'm at with that, and that's all I'll say on that. So that's where I'm at with that, and that's all I'll say on that. All right.
Can I clarify something? Can I ask for a clarification?
Yeah. And then we'll go ahead and go to public comment.
All right. So am I reading this and interpreting this right? That she can still advertise for the 35-hour position, is that right?
Right.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll ask for public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room, or please raise your hand via Teams. Anybody here? I see somebody.
Madam President, as a point of order, our TSD screen, or TSD, our screen's down here for Councilmember Hawk. It's been off for most of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will go to public comment, but if someone from TSD would be able to help reboot, because it's not on down here. All right. It looks like Christine Brackenhoff has her hand raised, and if she is able to unmute, you'll have three minutes. Christine, are you able to unmute? She says she's trying. Okay, so it looks like we have somebody that's about to walk up and make public comment here. So go ahead, sign in, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Aurora DiOrio. I'm with the Monroe County Board of Health. I wanted to thank you all for your thoughts and your discussion. I think all of you had valid points. I see, it's one of those, like, my head is spinning right now, you know? I can see where everyone is coming from. We, I'm trying to get my thoughts together. I think David Henry mentioned the option of a deputy. We, the Board of Health, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Kelly, we were under the impression that we were not allowed to ask for a deputy, that that would not be considered. And so when we crafted this position to try to assist with the myriad of duties that she has been doing, that really should belong to a deputy, the way we carved it out was through this particular position. And I think we can try to find someone qualified at the lower level. I do not think we will be successful, and so we may have to go way back to the drawing board. But I just, I just wanted to thank you all for your consideration and your, you know, your thoughtfulness.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go back to Teams to see, looks like Christine should be able to unmute and make comment. Are you able to unmute? Looks like you have been upgraded to presenter. Mic is grayed out. Okay. Mic is grayed out. TSD, is there any help with that? We can also potentially, okay. So it looks like TSD has said, Ms. Brackenhoff, that you could come back and join. If you come back and join, and it's still not working, we can give you one of our cell phone numbers where we would be able to have you call in and make your comment. Because I do want to make sure that people that are waiting should be able to do so. So go ahead and rejoin, and then we'll come back to you. In the meantime, is there anybody else that has any public comment on this particular item? Either come forward here to the Nat U Hill Room, to the lectern here, or raise your hand via Teams as we wait.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon, counselors. My name is Christine Brackenhoff. I am a resident and nurse of Monroe County. I am also a former Monroe County Health Department employee, specifically the last licensed practical nurse of Futures Family Planning Clinic. During my, during the last county council meeting, when you discussed reclassifying the Health Services Director position against WIS recommendations, I heard health department leaders frame WIS recommendations as impediments to serving human lives in this community. Ms. DiOrio insinuated that Roadblocks gave health department leaders black eyes and cramp her image. I doubt that salary is the deterrent factor for potential applicants. Regarding the Health Services Director position, my two senses that this somewhat sounds like a unicorn. An administrative figure who is also a nurse, going to provide clinical services, and going to oversee 10-plus employees who range in from child health, harm reduction, tobacco cessation, disease intervention, and more. It's a heavy kaleidoscope for one quote-unquote middle manager. As I understand, WIS had a hard time finding a position to compare this to. If that's abnormal, then maybe this position isn't extremely marketable. I'll address what I believe has been an elephant in the room. It is well-known and documented that the Health Department has seen notable staff turnover and low morale under the current administration. Not only is turnover costly for the county, it is probably hindering recruitment efforts. I saw some press coverage about department turmoil during the interview process for Futures, but I was so eager to work at the clinic that I took offense anyway. While I'm very grateful for the positive memories and experiences at Futures, the collapse of the clinic was devastating. Health Department leadership claimed that staff performance was a contributing factor in the clinic's demise, which added insult to injury. Our efforts to obtain explanations from leaders have largely been met with dismissive remarks, non-answers, and silence. This past week, multiple former employees provided specific examples and evidence about their concerns during the health board meeting's public comments. After the attendees left the room, Dr. Pritchard said he was not convinced that employees were treated unfairly. Dr. Robinson stated that there is a lot of displaced anger and claimed that anger placed on Ms. Kelly was unfair. If Health Department leadership wants to attract and retain strong candidates, I really think they need to reckon with their reputation and culture. I never saw recent Health Department leaders display passionate advocacy for Futures, which I will note had two nurses who administered intramuscular injections to treat STDs supported by federal funding. I have seen Health Department leaders point fingers at employees, partners, and members of county government. More than one has emphasized that they are frustrated, yet don't fully understand county processes. Ensuring fairness among government personnel is not at odds with our community's health. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else via Teams that would like to make a public comment on this item? Or anybody else here in the Nat U Hill Room? Please, again, come to the lectern here. Going once, going twice. All right. Seeing no more public comment. Michelle, maybe please have a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk? Counselor Crossley?
No.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
No.
Counselor Fidel?
No.
Motion fails five to two.
Thank you. All right. So we will go on to item number eight.
Counsel, I move to approve the Sheriff's Office request and fund 1170-0005, Public Safety Lit Sheriff, to amend the 2025 Salary Ordinance to approve account line 15161, Administrative Coordinator and 15162 Administrative Coordinator to a three-year step increase KSA status.
Okay.
All right. We got our motion in a second. And we have a representative here from the Sheriff's Office. Hello.
Hello. I'm Jamie Yaki. I'm the Office Administrator for the Sheriff's Office. Kim, am I doing this? Okay. So I submitted KSA requests for two of our, we call them records two. Records is divided into one and two. Records two are our typists, the other ones who type all of the cases. So these two positions are in records two. We recently lost two employees. There are only four on the records two, so it's half. So it's kind of put a strain, obviously, on that side. So we're trying to get employees that have experience in records or in law enforcement, because it takes anywhere from nine to 12 months to train the employees. So anybody that we can get into these positions that has that experience is extremely beneficial. So we have two that we submitted for three years, and Kim Shell and HR approved them. But I think there was wanting more discussion as to whether our budget will be able to fund this or not. So that's why we're here.
Okay. Thank you. And I already see a hand in my purview. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, and I sent a message out to some folks in the Sheriff's Department saying that in order to remain consistent, and as Molly Turner King said to me, if there's one thing you can say about Marty, she's consistent. Because I think you have to. Clearly, if I was picking and choosing some of my favorite departments, there's many of them, I wouldn't, I, you know, it's harder for me to say no to. But that's the reason why you have to put those blinders on. You have to look at, here's what, here's what rules. Now, right now, the way the rule's setting right now, that with the county had, county council had agreed to use this KSA situation. So what I had thought, well, maybe, since I'm always going to say no, right now, I really am always going to say no about any KSA at this point, why don't we just change the rule so that, you know, it doesn't, it, one person can't do it? I mean, I'm not here to just be a troublemaker. I am just here to, but I will not change my vote just to be a nice guy. So I just won't. But it was a reminder to me that really, if everybody says yes to the KSA or they don't respond with certain amount of time, then they can go ahead with the KSA. That's, that's the same as the first reading on a salary ordinance. So even if one person questions it, that means you have to have a second reading of the salary ordinance. Now, actually, we did not do an official first reading every time we have a KSA. But considering where we are, and since we don't really know how all this is going to end up, I really think that it would be very important for us to just, as I've said this before, put a major pause on all this KSA. And we've got entry level, we know what the level is. For somebody who wants to come and work for county government, they know what it is, and that's what they could be offered. And I think we have really great benefits and other reasons why people like to work for county government. And I think that there'll be no shortage of people who will want to do that. But those are just my thoughts, and I don't know whether, I, I had hoped that we would have a discussion, whether or not we thought KSA was like something we should continue with, so that it wasn't like just picking one on one department, that it was like an overall. Because I just think it's better to just be, have something that's right for everyone. So there you go.
Okay. Good point. Anybody else on this side have any questions or comments? Nope. Seeing none, I'm going to go to my left.
I did have one, one minor question. So as I'm looking at the two, the two line items, so there's no change, just to clarify with staff and everybody, there's no change in salary with the first position with, as I'm looking at it, right? Well, no, no, if I'm looking at the packet, the question I have is, first line item, the before and after, it's the same amount? Is that correct? So it's the second administrative coordinator position that has the slight change in, based on the KSA. Why are both positions different if they're the same, like in terms of the K? I'm just trying to understand why, yeah. Help me out with that. Yeah.
So the employees that were previously in those positions, the first one was budgeted at three years. That's where the years of experience that she had with the county. The other position, they only had a year, actually, their third year would have been this year. So it should have been budgeted for at three years. But it's just the way that they, their years of service fell. That's the only reason.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Over here to my left, anybody got any questions or comments? Thoughts? Okay.
Yes, go ahead. If there's not any other comments, I'd like to add that when we get something that says there's no fiscal impact, I just think we need to look broader at this. Because, just because it's budgeted, because the person who had the position before, before they left, had been there for three years, we budgeted for three years because they had earned that spot, and they started at the beginning, or should have. And the money is there. Remember, we were counting on all these reversions, and that's how you get a reversion. And just because the money is sitting there does not mean there's not a fiscal impact if you just go ahead and do it. One, very recently, one that was done, it was a $9,000 fiscal impact. So there, there's, you know, we're talking about some real money, but if you're going to just say you're not going to do KSA, then they'll quit asking for, they will start at that level instead of asking for a three-year level or a five-year level. They'll just, whatever that salary ordinance, that entry level is. And if those dollars aren't used for that spot, they can be used for, you know, we might even start clawing it back once they've changed over. There's going to be a lot of decisions we're going to have to make. But just because it's sitting in that budget does not mean that they should just feel free to hire somebody else at that higher level.
Okay. Counselor.
Thank you. I, you know, I think this conversation about where we draw the line in terms of the fiscal impacts on this county, where we need to save money, I think is a really healthy one. And I think folks are out there knowing that we are up against it in terms of fiscal pressures. And we're going to be making some changes. I think a fuller conversation needs to happen on Resolution 2023-02, which was the governing resolution that established the KSA policies, that made sure that they're what, it's the reason why this came to this body in this way, because a council member spoke, that transparency is important. And I think that having further conversations is going to be really important to talk about what tweaks, if any, we need to make to the KSA policies. I think that's going to be something that we could possibly have in the future. As it relates to this, this resolution that we have before us on these two positions, I'm going to be voting in favor because we have the policy now, and we have not had a robust conversation about whether or not we should draw the line differently. We did just last month approve KSAs for another department. That seems equitable. It seems that if we were to say, we are not going to approve something because we're making a last-minute change to a resolution, that is somewhat akin to me that we're pulling the rug right out from under you as you're sitting right here in front of us. Now, so I, that's my rationale for supporting this tonight, and my support for a more robust conversation about KSA in addition to some of the other items that were laid out and indicated that we could be looking at because of what's happening at the State House.
Do a lead order. All right. Thank you. Anybody?
Can I ask something?
Yes.
So I would be interested to know Counselor Iverson's rationale on when a KSA pause might be necessary.
So that would be something that would be, we need to be talking about it with council, but we also need you talking about it with staff. I think that there's a couple of things that happened, and I want to be really brief here. But the Senate Bill 1 set the maximum growth levy quotient higher than we thought it was going to be. Senate Bill 1 also laid out some stipulations for local income tax that were a little different than we thought they were going to be. The changes in property tax are going to hurt. And I think there needs to be some more robust conversations in this county about how directly this will impact us before we start making decisions on what we're going to start cutting. Now, that is my personal opinion, and I think that working with the auditor, as we have done in the past, we're going to have a more we're going to have a more clear answer as to what's going to happen. Other council members have noted that they're not done at the State House yet. So I think before we make drastic changes that are going to be impacting our 800-plus employees, that we need to take a breath, figure out what is exactly in front of us, and then start making decisions. But your question is very apt, and I think it would behoove the employees of Monroe County if we had those conversations in public, in front of the cameras, but also as soon as possible.
Counselor Fidell, do you have anything else?
Thank you.
Counselor Deckard.
I agree with Counselor Iverson on making decisions about new policies on how funding will go forward, whether that's getting additional revenues or changing KSAs or halting those. I think that we need to have a, these are the new rules of the game, this rule is changing, and I think we need to do that very transparently so our elected, other elected officials and department heads know what's going on. Having watched this council over a number of decades as the son of a county employee, one of the ways that I've watched the council respond in tough times is leave it to just at this bench, a very kind of punishing sort of thing for any department head that would venture forth, and then say, well, let's go through and see 25 cents there, $22 there. No one needs to be doing that, make sure that you're working over your lunch, and doing that the hard way. And while there's something to be said that, you know, every dollar does add up and count, I think there's a wholesale way that we can figure out funding for the future or changes to the future, including KSAs. I think that we sometimes still pay for those past wrangling meetings where we say, tell me about your nickels there, what's this doing, what's overtime going? And I think we're just getting nickels for jars. I also think that we sometimes get into trouble because we have to model as a council the same things that we ask the other county partners to model. So every time that we ask staff to go figure this out, or we add an additional burden to know this or do that or prepare that or go get this, those cost hours. Even being in this meeting right now, we have county employees that are being paid in the meeting, and that will affect the bottom line. So the longer I talk here, it costs money. And counselors like me need to be cognizant of those things, right? It adds up, friends. And so I think having a, taking these one at a time, what does this have to look like? What does this be? That's, I think, how we get to funding our future or changing our future. All this you have had to listen to, and I apologize for that, but that's part of kind of the road for now. And then I guess just the last thing I would say generally on that, that occasionally means, as a community, not just the tough conversation of cut, 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 it means how do you fund the things that you want? Because when the, you know, what hits the van, the people expect that services are still provided.
Thank you. Let's see, Counsel Henry, and then I'll go make a comment, and then we'll move forward with this item.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm having a hard time getting on our network drive from up here. Can, are you, are you in the network drive, Michelle? Can you give me the lowest end of the pay band on COMOT-C? Like, what's the entire pay band, low, medium, mid-high? I can't quite get to it. And while you're looking that up, I'll just reflect on Councilman, or Counselor Deckard's comments that, yeah, I've definitely done my share of counting of the cost of meetings per hour when you add up everyone's salary in the room. So I appreciate mightily the observation that meetings cost money. Vacancies cost money, every time we have to onboard costs money. There are a lot of hidden costs in county government that if we had a ticker up here with how much cost per minute we're doing, I'm sure folks would be surprised, but thank you for that observation. Ms. Shaw, do you have it? Thank you.
Okay, the position is a 40-hour COMET-C. At the base, they would start at, and this would be for an entire year, is 49-088. They are asking for a three-year bump or a step, which would be 54-538.
Thank you.
Budgeted at 40 hours right now or 35?
40. They're all at 40.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Henry. I'll take the final comment on this one, and then we'll go ahead and move on here. Yes, all of the things that have been made, mentioned, yes, we do need to have a conversation. And first of all, I'd like to say that the Long-Term Finance Committee also meets this Thursday at 11:00. And that is a conversation that could be had in that particular committee. And then I'd also like to bring this back to the full council to have at our next meeting, which looks like it is May 13th. So I would like for us to consider having this KSA conversation because we did do something for the public defender, and it's not fair for us to just scrap somebody in moment time as they're still sitting here. I do think that we need to have that conversation, and the conversation needs to be had out in public, and we just need to go ahead and have it out. It's uncomfortable, but also it's what we got elected to do. So I'm looking forward to have that conversation. And yes, vacancies do cost money. But my concern is not going forward with this can continue to put another strain on departments. And in addition to that, you have, you've, you know, strained everybody that's there now. Now you have nobody, now you have to figure out how to get somebody in. So that's my concern, and that's why I say that we need to continue to move forward with this, and I'll vote in favor of this. So without further ado here, I'd like to go ahead and make public comments. So if you have public comment on this particular item, please come forward here to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand via Teams. And seeing none via Teams or here in the Nat U Hill Room, Michelle, can we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Henry? Counselor Fidell?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes majority, six to one. This will require a second reading.
Thank you. And I also want to add just one more point to this. This is the part that's a little frustrating because now we have to come back again for a second reading. And so for the back and forth, because now we could potentially have added more time to make this stuff happen. So I would like to make sure that we're, you know, it's costing you to continue to be here as well. So again, as we think about this, we have the Long-Term Finance Committee with myself, Counselors Hawke and Fidell. This is a conversation that we could ask Mr. Garitas. But again, I want to make sure that we bring this back to council May 13th so we can have it. So please make sure you are here or be square. So, thank you. Looks like we'll see you again.
That's a reminder that meaning it does not take a 100% vote, just takes the majority. And.
But you still gotta come back because it wasn't done tonight. So, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And I'd already wanted to.
Yeah, thank you. All right, going forward with item number nine, the Election Board. I would like to invite Ms. Alana Stonebreaker, Vote Center Committee Chair, to give the presentation of Vote Centers. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Alana Stonebreaker, I'm a volunteer that is helping. And I actually have with me three of our Vote Center Committee members with me as well. So I have a presentation that I'm going to give you guys. It's a little bit of something that I know a lot of you guys may have seen already, which is about proposed Vote Centers and the output of our report, as well as we are here. And I'm very excited. Thank you for responding so quickly to my plea to have a conversation here. Because I do think that the fiscal elements are an incredibly important part. Everything that we've heard tonight really makes that clear. So, next slide, please. So what is a Vote Center? A Vote Center is a Vote Anywhere Center here in Monroe County. It's similar to early voting, if you've done that before. It differs from precinct voters, voters go to their designated polling site on Election Day. Currently, 65 of the 92 counties have adopted a Vote Center model, as well as at the legislature, a bill has passed for a summer study to look at converting all vote, all non-vote centers to Vote Centers. And they will issue their recommendation in January. Next slide, please. So what would it look like if we were to adopt this new model? So what it looks like to have Vote Centers is a citizen registered here can go to any of the locations in the county, and then they check in the same way they currently do. So most of our places, we have what are called e-poll books or electronic poll books. So they present their ID, and then they, what they will do next is they will go and their ballot will then be printed out. So most of the fiscal cost is for the printers. So then the election pass prints out the appropriate ballot versus pre-printed, and then the voter votes on the paper ballot, hands to election worker who feeds it into the ballot processing machine. So the difference is, we're a little bit more consistent across our areas. And once again, everyone can vote at any of the locations. Next slide, please. The steps for creating a Vote Center are, first, you form a study committee, which is what this is. We adopted ours in 2023. We create a plan, the plan is out, and it, and we are accepting public comment until May 19th. And additionally, we need a resolution from the county commissioners and a resolution from the county council. So that's one of the reasons why I'm particularly speaking to you guys today, is we have the county commissioners, we have that one from 2023, and we still need that. That can be done concurrently with our other work. And then we file the plan. Next slide, please. So in 2023, the Monroe County Election Board created the Vote Center Committee. It's composed of representatives from the political parties, the League of Women Voters, independents, university students, and nonpartisan organization. And that's, and I have their charge on there, but I'm going to move forward to the methodology, which is the next slide. We, so the committee, which started as 11 and kind of bright-sized down to seven, was held listening sessions in Ellisville, Unionville, IU Campus twice, and the Monroe County NAACP. And we also included comments from the Stone Belt Board of Directors via Howell Turner and IU Pace. We also had benchmarking against Cass, Wayne, Hancock, Porter, Tippecanoe, St. Joseph, and Jackson, all Vote Center counties. And also Kylie Moore visited a similar county with a similar type of machines in a different state, as well as we had a presentation by the Chicago Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights to try and better understand. All right, next slide. The options that were chosen by the committee to consider, to kind of give us some guardrails in terms of it, were, we were going to look at converting what are 20, all 29 current polling locations into Vote Centers, selecting 22 locations of our current link 29, selecting 11 locations to become Vote Centers, which we considered to be, per statute, the lowest that we could have based on population, or not to adopt Vote Centers at this time. And we did consider this previously in 2011, and it did not pass the Election Board. Next slide. The recommendation was that the committee found that the Vote Centers have the potential benefits for Monroe Counties and should be adopted. By a 7-0 vote, the committee recommends converting all 29 super precincts into Vote Centers. So once again, we don't actually have precinct voting, we actually have multiple precincts that vote at the same location. And that changes for people as well. Next slide, please. We were asked by the Election Board to also issue early voting locations. And so we also issued recommendations for three early voting locations at least 10 days before the election, at Ellisville Town Hall, IU Center on Representative Government, and the Monroe County Public Library Southwest Branch. We've talked to each of these groups, and I'll be talking a little bit more about this. Once again, this is not required as part of the Vote Center Plan. We were asked to advise, we received a lot of enthusiastic support for additional locations, and that's why that is part of our recommendations. Next slide. You can view our report on our website in terms of it. So here's the QR code. Next slide. Included in this report is the required compliance checklist, the required Vote Center plans. You have to have the schema of all Vote Center locations, the number of Vote Centers, the locations of the Vote Centers, feedback we received, and then the recommendations of the committee. So all of those things are included as well. So that's what was included in the report. Can I go to the next slide, please? So one thing that I want to say before we start talking about fiscal impacts is we really do need to be thinking about an entire cycle when we think about funding for voting and elections. So as you can see, the amount of polling sites over time varies drastically based on the election. As you can see, in 2019, we had as little as nine, and we've had as much as 35, depending on expectations about that election. And one thing to think about is that, obviously, every three, every four years, there is no election. So if you think, usually we think yearly, so if you ask, it will save money. Yes, every three years, it will save money because we will never, we won't have an election that year. Municipals cost about half what an election is for a presidential, and about three-quarters is about the cost of a midterm. So, next slide. Okay, so I'm going to start with the major financial impact of this, and I really do welcome your guys' comments. So in order to, so I'm just going to cover what it is to adopt the polling equipment we need in order to become a Vote Center. I will also address what it will cost if we were to adopt the early voting recommendations as well. So the total cost for ballot printers, auto ballot kits, label printers, and scanners from a technological thing is about $600,000. And that's the kind of the total cost on the price tag. Next slide. So to give you an idea of what the total cost is by election year, I've put on the slide the total amount. So basically, the biggest thing is it's $2.8 million per four-year cycle, which is kind of what I'm trying to focus on, is that it's $2.8 million per four-year cycle in terms of that. And I bring that up because you can see that the costs vary drastically in between different areas, and so that might lead to some different changes in terms of it. So when I think about how much this will cost us over time, I'm looking up for the total four-year cycle. Next slide, please. Additionally, so we looked at, so I gave you that $600,000. The committee also thought about 22 Vote Centers, and so you can see some things that we also include in here. Because once again, the Election Board can change their report to adopt whatever makes sense to them. Like, we create the draft and they create the report. So we, so these are the costs, for example, of 22 Vote Centers, if we started with that option as well. So you can get an idea of how much less that would be. Next slide, please. So the new equipment will last for about six to eight years. Of that $600,000, we actually already have a HAVA grant that covers $35,000 of it. Additionally, and that, this doesn't go into, oh, 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 sorry. This is the total Election Day voting cost first. So yeah, you can get an idea for how much it would cost in terms of staffing because obviously staffing is the biggest cost in terms of it. Next slide, please. I'm going to go to the next one. So yeah, so I said new equipment lasts six to eight years. We have a HAVA grant for $35,000. We calculate that the annual capital upfront cost is somewhere between $75,000 to $100,000. As part of this, and I like to celebrate it because it is Earth Day, it does eliminate the cost of pre-printing ballots, so less paper pre-printed, which is an $80,000 expense, a pretty large expense. I'm guessing having to do a lot with staffing for that as well. So the total election cost increase over the cycle would be about 5%. If we adopted 22 instead, it would be about 1.6%. And I think we were talking before this that if we adopted 20, it would be, it would be cost neutral in terms of it. I bring that up in terms of the cost estimates, but I will also say that there is some money already in the budget. There's a $25,000 that is currently in the equipment fund. Now, the election, the election and voters registration was planned to use that to repair machines this year. But we don't yet know how many we need to repair, we're about to do that work. So, but theoretically, we could forego some types of repairs in order to put towards that. So there would be like an additional $25,000 at least that could come from the budget. The larger, just to give you an idea of what it would cost the county to adopt three 10-day voting sites before the election, the estimates that we have, and I'm sorry if I don't have those up on the slide, you can go to the next slide, is about $180,000 to $322,000 yearly, would be yearly. So I calculated. So I calculated that if we consider kind of towards a midterm, that's about a thirty percent increase to our elections. So once, once again, if we were to adopt early voting locations, and one of the things we did hear over and over again is that early voting is something that our voters are shifting to. They prefer early voting, but that would be about, that would be what the cost would look like for adopting the early voting potential recommendations. So once again, this is, most of our report is about the six hundred thousand, but I wanted to give you an idea of what those, how those costs kind of work out in terms of what that would look like to do it. It would be about a thirty percent increase to our election budget. Now, that might be worth it because those would be locations like the IMU, like the Ellisville Christian Church, I believe, that, that maybe would, would draw other vote center, vote, voters that maybe couldn't make it to our, our central downtown location. So that's the focus in terms of it. All right, next slide, please. So a summary, we did find widespread support for making it easier to vote. People, as we've talked about before, if you went to our first public hearing, we had about, what, two-hundred-and-fifty provisional ballots that were, were all people who voted at the wrong location. Over and over again, we hear from election workers that this is a common issue, even without the provisional ballots of people who go to the wrong location, don't realize the right location is. This is most obvious with some of the dorms don't all vote at the IMU. Some of them vote at, I believe, Bloomington North, which is kind of, kind of cra- I mean, no, no judgment in terms of it, but it just kind of, you know, blows their minds. I mean, I, my voting location has changed every year since I got here up on the north side. So like, if I don't get the, the postcard, I might not know where to go to vote. Now, I have a car, so it might be different. Anyway, so sixty-five out of ninety-two counties have already adopted vote centers. Election costs vary from year to year, so if we talk about when this will break even, I think it's also good to keep in mind that there's a sort of ebb and flow in terms of the cost of elections in terms of this. And then additional early, early voting comes with costs, but is deeply wanted, and overall, is moving to vote centers adds five percent to the election budget, and we could make it essentially cost neutral if we, if we went with the twenty-two as part of the project in terms of it. So I think that's everything I had in terms of giving you guys kind of an idea. I really welcome your, your, your input on this topic. I think this, the fiscal impacts is a really important element for this, and your thoughts on those issues, I, I welcome them as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure folks have questions here. I wanted to ask, and I see Counselor Fidel had her hand up. I have a quick question to kind of start us off. Slide fifteen, I think, might be a typo because it had twenty-nine vote centers, six-oh-one, twenty-two vote centers, five-fifty-seven, and then it had twenty-nine again. Should that, with a different cost, should that be?
That, that was twenty vote centers, sorry, twenty vote centers.
What I, okay, I wrote that down because then you mentioned that in the next slide, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, 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 Kylie's made analysis, yeah, that was, yeah, and she's confirming over here.
Okay.
Because those, those are all things that Kylie has gotten us.
Okay. And the other thing, because obviously, election board has to vote unanimously.
Yes.
For this, or else this, so we can do a resolution, and it gets to the election board, and one person can vote no on it, and then everything just goes to kaput. So this is a really important discussion, and I hope the public is paying attention to that. My other question is, do you have a feel for what the election board is looking for in terms of vote centers? Because you have a range from twenty to twenty-two to twenty-nine. Do they have, can somebody get a feel? I can't really watch their meetings until after they're over, but I just am curious to hear if, you know, where people are standing on the election board.
Kylie Ferris, election supervisor. I will say that when we very first started the conversation with the election board, it was looking more towards the twenty-two locations. Right before the plan was presented to the election board, there was thoughts of just converting all twenty-nine so it's less confusing. And then now that they've gotten the plan, I think they're starting to lean more towards less again. So right now, it's still kind of in the air on what their exact thoughts are, but May nineteenth is the second public hearing. That will be when the election board will review it for the second time publicly, and they will potentially take a vote on that day to accept or decline the proposal.
And they can approve with revisions, so they could adopt a twenty-two model. And me and Kylie have worked a little bit on what that twenty-two would look like based on the data and the interest in terms of it, so.
And the last question that I wanted to ask, the HAVA grant, does that have a time limit on when, like, we basically have to use it or we lose it? Is that my understanding?
I'm sure on that, I do know that the original intent for that was to buy more printers, and then we started working more on the vote center plan and decided to hold off until we decided whether or not we were going to go with vote centers.
And shake it, so yes. Okay, thank you. All right. I'm going to go to Counselor Fidel.
So you asked the same question I was going to ask about the clarification for the second number being twenty instead of twenty-nine, so I did have that. But I'm wondering if we know if each one of the election board members is in support of vote centers in general.
I will say, I know two are for sure more on deck with it, and then the third, we're still kind of questionable. We are not a hundred percent sure.
And just for, for Claire, if you don't know, the, the current, uh, third person that we're talking about has been on the election board for two meetings. So it's been kind of, you know, we haven't had a whole lot of time to talk about it, but the concerns that they have brought up or been interested in have been the fiscal ones, which is why it's important to me that I, that we have the fiscal conversation here at county council.
So after the last election board meeting and the last public hearing, the new board member did ask for numbers for other options. So that's when me and Alana started working on finding cost versus the twenty-nine, twenty-two, and twenty. I kind of took upon myself the twenty just because it's in between that twenty-two and eleven, and nobody was really looking at that eleven number, so.
Counselor Wiltz. You, on slide seventeen, it says total election cost increase five percent. That's with the twenty-nine, I think you said. Twenty-two vote center model is one-point-six percent. But on the last slide, it says that twenty-two vote centers makes it cost neutral, but I thought you said it was twenty. I'm just, is it twenty or twenty-two that would have the neutral?
Yeah, I was considering one-point-six percent to be non-neutral in terms of it, the one-point-six. And so, yeah, sorry, the twenty would be true, and then I, I think I was just, yeah, in terms of it. I was thinking one-point-six was close to cost neutral when I originally wrote that slide, and then I was like, eh, you know, and so then I changed it. So yeah, the truly cost neutral, like dimes and cents difference would be twenty, but we were, we were considering one-point-six percent to be close enough in terms of, of, of numbers to be very close to cost neutral. That was, that was the thought of the committee, though I totally understand that one-point-six percent increase is not technically cost neutral.
Got it. I just, I'm sorry, I was, I wasn't trying to be that person, but I was that person.
No, 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 no. No, I want you to be that person, that's great.
I'm going to keep going down the council lawn with Counselor Deckard, and then I'll switch over here.
Thank, thank you very much for your presentation and your continued discussions on this, all of you. I know that you've been heavily involved in this for some time. If I'm, I, I'm anxiously kind of listening for what constituents say about this, and what I've overwhelmingly heard is that folks are definitely interested in being able to vote where, where, at a legal polling place, not being turned away because I, I didn't know Perry Five was me versus Perry Four, right? Because that really means nothing to anybody other than today's election day or early voting, I'm going to go vote there. And it occurs to me that the original plan of a robust vote center account, I, I personally, when I look at that twenty-nine, it makes me feel comfortable because it tells me that somebody doesn't have to go a further distance to a polling place. We all have, you know, access and means in this room. My gosh, if you put our polling place in the state of Michigan, we're probably going to find it and probably get there. We make carpool. Not every voter has that convenience. So for me, the robust number kind of, kind of takes care of that, plus it turns away all that bureaucratic, oh, I'm sorry, it's four, or it's, pardon me, it's five forty-five, and you really were supposed to go to Perry Four or Indian Creek Twelve, five thousand, whatever, right? And, and so to me, that gives that decision. The other thing is, what I have picked up, there's folks that want the robust decision, and I've heard some of my friends on the other side of the aisle, the Republican members, and gosh knows they wouldn't hire me to speak for them, but they have had, I've heard some fears about a reduction in polling place, meaning they can't go where they traditionally have gone, or they're, or God forbid, they think that the Democrats are gaming on them. So to me, that, that higher number sort of takes care of it, and it also, if we were maintaining that, put it in the plan, planned out for a few cycles under a unanimous bipartisan vote center agreement adopted by that election board, we could probably alleviate some of the concerns of the public there. I do think that if there are folks who have concerns out there and are in positions of authority, so our Republican election board member, now'd be a good time to articulate those fully, to say, I, I, we want to make sure this is very bipartisan, because it does have to be something that folks buy into. We've seen examples where people don't buy into elections, election administration, election results, and all that does is it make it, makes it harder for folks like her and election board members and volunteers, then suddenly you don't get volunteers or poll workers. And so I think that a, a public, hey, look, let's work on this, let's get it right. And I think that could alleviate a lot of concerns. The last thing I'll say, and I, I don't want to talk too long, is years and years ago, when I was doing my portion of election administration, I can remember a voter who was struggling around having the right ID on election day. As it turns out, this voter had voted, had served in World War Two, and just simply on the phone to me, I want to vote for Mitt Romney. It was Mitt Romney at the time. I want to vote for Mitt Romney. And I remember thinking at the time, my gosh, my gosh, this person's gone and done probably the, one of the hardest things we've ever asked of any community member, World War Two, among other conflicts, and just want to come and vote for Mitt Romney. And they couldn't because there was a bureaucratic issue with their photo ID. Now, that is a separate issue, but when you're standing there at five forty-eight PM and someone goes, oh, no, I'm sorry, this thing's called provisional, you get kind of pissed, right? And if this could help us do that under what seems to be roughly the same number of polling places today, and the cost, I'm seeing there's HAVA dollars and costs don't seem so bad, then it tells me we're closer than not, but that's just me. Thank you.
I will make a comment on that. The polling locations that, when we sat down and looked at them, reducing them from the twenty-nine to the twenty-two and to the twenty, most of the places that we got rid of, one quite literally is across the road from each other. So there are ones that are very close within the same proximity, the ones that are on the outer sides of the county that most of our voters are concerned about losing, we've not touched. They're still there. There are ones that we would never even begin to think about getting rid of, especially like Burgoon. They are far out there. Yes, we don't get a lot of voters there, but they are religious on going to that vote center, that polling location on election day.
If I could add a few things, Steve Olent, also on the Vote Center Study Committee. One of them is that the most heavily trafficked polling stations that we found, it's in the list in the report, are in the northwest corner of the county, the Ellisville polling places, and that's under current voting habits. So they're already very popular, they already believe that there aren't enough polling places out there. Creating voting centers would allow them to vote anywhere where they go to work, and so it, it just would expand the number of polling places for everybody. Secondly, I, I think that Ms. Stonebreaker did a, a good job of summarizing the fiscal costs, but it might be easiest to think of election costs as a quadrennial expense, and that quadrennially, in the past quadrantium, we spent two-point-eight million dollars on voting altogether. Ms. Ferris believes that the equipment that we're talking about can be amortized over eight years, we can make it work at least eight years. We would have to make sure that, and she can speak to the cost of updates, but those are nominal compared to getting at least eight years out of them, which means that if we kept all twenty-nine vote centers, it would be an increase of roughly seventy-five thousand dollars a year. But if people are super concerned about that cost, it can be made zero. That seventy-five thousand dollars doesn't include the cost of pre-printed ballots. That's the major savings that vote centers provide. If you look at page fifteen of the report that we have, you'll see line eight says ballot sample official and absentee, roughly eighty-three thousand dollars in the twenty-four election, roughly forty-one thousand dollars in the twenty-three election. Ms. Ferris has estimated that midterms are halfway in between there. So we're talking about one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars per quadrantium saved in ballots we don't have to, to print because they're all printed just in time. With twenty vote centers, this can be made cost neutral. So that's the, the part that we wanted to emphasize here is that from a fiscal perspective, but it wasn't up to us to decide it, it was up to us to provide the choices. It's ultimately up to the election board to make a decision on how many polling centers they want. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going down the line here, I think Counselor Iverson had his hand up, and then we'll just keep going.
Great, thank you for being here, thank you for being here. I know it's a beautiful night, and there's a hawk on that limb out there who's watching your presentation, so you're blessed.
Hopefully he fills out the form, you know.
There's a hawk over here, too, I think.
I, I have not had the opportunity to publicly state that I am in favor of vote centers here in Monroe County, and I think it's an appropriate time to do so. I think it's appropriate that this body vocalizes that support, and that every member that feels that way is able to vocalize that support, because we do want to see that unanimous vote coming up. So I, I wanted to get that out of the way first. I have a couple of questions. My first one is, we're very concerned about labor costs. The entire meeting you just sat through, we were discussing labor issues. Are, are labor costs baked into these numbers?
I mean, again, page fifteen would tell you that the cost that we're talking about, you see that in figure eight, they're entirely the cost of equipment.
I didn't give them that one.
Sorry. We don't have a copy of that document.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Actually, this is a good point. So if you go to the Monroe County Election Board website, we did just add a additional page to that. It is in red at the very big top of the page, and it says vote centers in Monroe County. When you click on that, it will have all information about vote centers, it will have the plan where you can submit your public comment digitally, and then also that will have vote center information from the Secretary of State's website.
So slide sixteen, it sounds like does not have labor costs baked in?
Sorry, they don't, I didn't give them that copy of it. Yes, that is, that is in, that, that, the, the eighty-seven thousand, the vote centers, that's day, election day voting costs. So most of that is staffing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see what you mean, yeah.
Yeah, that, most of that is labor. Yes, that's not, that's, that, that, that is the vast majority that is staffing.
Because come budget time, that's going to be the bulk of what we're going to be talking about is, well, there's an election next year, so we need this many people and that sort of thing.
Right, which is one of the reasons why, I just want to say, like, the day, that's election day voting, because that's just one day, obviously.
Of course.
Yeah, and so when you, when you add up the forty-eight days of early voting that we have, that's where a lot of the election, the actual overall election cost comes from, is from all of those days of, of all of those staffing and all of that, so, yeah.
But the, that reflects an average cost on that slide. Again, I want to refer you to figure nine in the report. The only thing that, that figure eight says, the cost for additional capital equipment, that's for the six-hundred thousand dollars, is entirely equipment. So this does not change the number of staff per vote center. It takes real numbers into account. We had already factored it all in. The only increase in cost is capital to buy equipment.
And I will say that, we, in terms of developing our staffing model, Kylie did include larger places would have more teams, essentially, so it's not like all of them would be, because I, I think another main concern that people have with, with vote centers is obviously popular ones develop lines, and no one wants to see lines, so that, that's also something that we've considered.
So for the most part, all of the polling locations would transition to the vote centers if we did the twenty-nine locations. It would stay the same staffing. The judges who are currently at those locations would become the individuals who are at the printers. So it would just be shifting some workers from a different position to a, to a separate one.
Would there, isn't to think that there might be Would there, isn't to think that there might be savings to the county in terms of staffing, if we move to vote centers?
Depending on the number of locations that we go with.
Okay. Then the last thing I will ask is, and I, this may have already been done, but you, uh, in the presentation, which was wonderful, and thank you, uh, you alluded to, on slide eighteen, uh, that you didn't quite get the figures on there.
Yes.
And, and you had quoted a one eighty to three hundred twenty thousand dollar figure?
Yes.
Uh, and, and if, if we could have those as robustly laid out as on slide sixteen, that would be helpful. However, I also, uh, understand that there is a very helpful report that you're looking at, so if that could be emailed to the council office, that would be really helpful. And I also understand that if I were to go to the Vote Center website, I could find all this information as well.
Yes, so, um, we, I can email it to you guys tomorrow, that a way that you guys all have it, but.
Yeah, and I have it printed out if you'd like a copy, hang on.
And it is on the election board website.
I don't, I don't want paper.
I will email it, but then also for the public, it is on the election board website.
Great, thank you. And, and that report that you're looking at, it sounds intriguing.
Yeah, this is a, just a few pages from it, but it's the, increasingly we found that it was the key question, figures eight and nine in the report on pages fourteen and fifteen, uh, I think would answer all your fiscal questions.
Great, thank you, I'll stop talking.
Counselor Henry.
Thank you, um, thank you, Madam President. First, I have two questions and then some comment. If we were to adopt the, the model, what, does that make us the sixty-sixth county in Indiana at this point?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you on that.
As we beat, Brown County's working on it, too, right?
Uh, yeah.
Brown County is also working on it, but their, um, poll book vendor dropped eligibility, so they have to find a new poll book vendor.
Yeah.
Okay, wow. Uh, and then the second question I have is, so I know that it's a future meeting of this council, that we have a HAVA grant we're looking at, and it's thirty-five thousand covering how many printers that you're purchasing?
It will cover five printers with the, um, what is the scanning, sorry?
Auto scan, is it?
No. Auto scan, um, kit.
And it's my understanding that the county, the clerk's office is also pursuing an additional HAVA grant, is that correct?
I believe so.
So, so there's an opportunity to actually get even more printers on a subsequent,
Correct.
HAVA grant opportunity. Thanks for that. So a few of my comments, first of all, I mean, we're finally getting very close, this has been going on, at least this iteration since July of twenty-three. Of course, I was in a much different seat when we started this conversation, and I maybe want to apologize to the Vote Center Committee members as we initially created that resolution to make you meet every other week until, uh, we got a plan. I think this has to be the most comprehensive plan in the state of Indiana at this point on vote centers. I mean, you've had sixty-something counties to learn from to get us to this point, and so, you know, we're not the first county to try this, um, we, we have a lot of opportunity to learn from others, and you've done that, I really appreciate the work there. I want to lay some of the concerns of cost, because I think some of it, you know, this is really great to have some of these numbers to play with, but there are some other cost factors here to consider. You know, one is the annual reversion from the clerk of court's office at four elections, or as I believe, double check my numbers, uh, auditor, um, two hundred seven thousand reversions last year from, from the office after the election?
That sounds correct, give me a second to pull it up.
And then on top of that, uh, there was appropriations for about forty-eight thousand in paper, I think we hit a reimbursement for paper, and so there, there's a lot of available resource existing, it seems, in, in the election budget for the conversion to the centers. And then after that, it seems like the costs, uh, you know, and for the public's understanding, we're talking about capital improvements, um, to, to our elections. Elections cost money, uh, they've cost this county money for many years, at one point, that some, I believe, Counselor Hawk could verify this for me, I know about fifteen or twenty years ago, we had to jettison all the voting equipment due to end of life, and I think there was a technical issue with that with Mr. Fielder, when, late Mr. Fielder, when he was clerk. We've been through purchasing equipment multiple times, but this is the cost of, of government. Government costs money, and voting, uh, is the most important thing we do to put us all up here to make decisions. But I raise all that to say, there is resource in the reversions we see out of the budget of the clerk's office, we know that the clerk is doing a great job pursuing HAVA grants to buy printers as, as we're going to need them anyway. Um, and, and I'm, I think that, you know, that this is more feasible than what the numbers are displaying here. I just want to also reiterate for everybody, we've been at this conversation really since twenty-eleven, um, and, you know, government has a habit of delay in Monroe County and in the state of Indiana. I mean, it took us eighty years to get alcohol sales on Sunday, it took us, uh, you know, twenty, we were debating twenty years about Indiana time and going to Eastern Standard Time because it would confuse the cows. I know things take time in the state of Indiana, uh, to get to, but fourteen years of discussion of vote centers with so many other counties leading us in the charge makes sense to me. And I think, as I've mentioned last week, um, I think it's really important for us to hold on to our home rule, and it really is a bipartisan issue. Counties, uh, blue and red have adopted, uh, vote centers over the past decade or so, but we now know that the, uh, the Secretary of State is empowered to investigate basically forcing the issue and having the other twenty-seven counties adopt, uh, vote centers one way or another. And I'd like to control this process as much as we can here, instead of it being converted for us in a manner that maybe we do not see ourselves in, in the community. So I think that's a bipartisan choice, I, I think we want to maintain our opportunity to, uh, uh, make the decision for the vote center process. So I'm obviously for this, um, thank you for all your hard work to get us this far, no stone has been unturned at this point. Thank you so much.
Yes, but before we get to you, Counselor Hawk, I just want to, speaking of control, I'm going to bring it back. Item B is a discussion regarding fiscal impact of vote centers. So I would like to ask if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the fiscal impact, um, these folks can go about their day. And so we are in the part right now where we need to be asking them about questions related to the vote center part. So any other topics of discussions or questions related to fiscal impact can wait until item B. Counselor Hawk?
Yes, in a response to some of what Councilmember Henry was speaking, uh, talking about the reversions, and so, uh, a few years ago, I don't know how many years ago, uh, the county council had determined that we were going to save back one-fourth of the cost of presidential election every year, and let that sit there and build up and grow and build up and grow, so that when that fourth year hit us, we were ready, and we weren't like scrambling, because we were really short of money there. You guys really don't remember how tough it was, uh, to try to make dollars work back, back then. And I'm not sure that's going on now, like one-fourth of the cost. And so, uh, while that might not have anything directly having to do with the vote centers, I think we ought not to count on reversions, uh, to pay for it. I think we just have to recognize it costs X dollars and figure out how we're going to pay those X dollars, or just figure out, we're not going to have a plan to cover the presidential election for years, whenever it is. You know, because it'll get here quicker than what we think, and you guys, I know you're all holding your breath, but, you know, it, it will come. And it's expensive, this might very well save some dollars, and it might not be as much. Uh, I for one, just have to say, oh, the history and the memory of voting on election day, and the small towns, small communities here in Monroe County, and the ladies would just fix the most wonderful meals. Why, everybody wanted to work, uh, election day because it was the best E you were going to get all year long. So, uh, that has changed, and so I regret that, but some things, uh, do change, and I'm just glad we had those happy memories.
Counselor Hawk, did you have a question in that, related to vote centers?
I had, I had a statement.
Oh, okay.
And the statement is, if we are, if we are looking at using reversions when you're talking about the fiscal impact, was really, reply, what do you say?
As, as Councilman Henry was talking about.
Yeah, I think we need to, to look at, are we still saving money for that presidential election? That's my question, you don't have to answer it today, but just, it's a thought for you to keep in mind.
Yeah, and that's why I think also we were originally looking just in the equipment budgets, um, for, for, for the costs in terms of it, but I do, I do think that the reversion is an interesting way, because I think it, it is, like we said, it is a capital investment that would possibly help us when we get to the election, um, the presidential election in a couple of years, like, um, because there is the possibility, I just want to say that, I mean, I'm assuming that we, we really like the twenty-nine, but I think as soon as we get there, it, I think people, like, a comment that we got, which is not entirely about it, that we got in Elsville, um, was, if I'm getting in the car, I might as well go a little bit further, or I might as well do X or Y, right? In terms of it, and so people might choose to keep locations, for example, with really good parking, um, over locations without really good parking. That sort of decision-making might be something that we start thinking about, and that we'll have the flexibility to do, because we won't have to depend on precinct voting.
Can I add just a, one thing? If, if you're concerned about the cost of the presidential year, uh, I'm not sure if the funding that Ms. Ferris has to deal with is in a separate non-reverting fund, but maybe the council could consider a quadrennial non-reverting fund so that you can balance out the money over time.
We tried that, and the state said, no, no, you cannot have but one rainy day fund, no, we tried it, we tried everything.
I defer to experience, and I regret that we can't do that, but I will say this, uh, the, what we figured out was that there isn't really a savings, uh, for, to vote centers within a vote center, it's almost clearly on the number of vote centers. And Clerk Brown, uh, was of the opinion that we should keep all those centers we currently have, because that's the best way of seeing what people prefer. But in hard times, fiscal times, the way to make sure that we don't, I mean, right now, the, the, the cost of, the quadrennial cost of elections, uh, doesn't rely on reversions, we might be able to save some money through, uh, using reversion money, but, uh, uh, the real question for the council, for the election board is, how many centers? We found, uh, my original vote was twenty-two, not twenty-nine, but then we found that all the other counties we studied had on average significantly more vote centers than the twenty-nine
When they first adopted.
Yeah.
When they, when they first adopted.
When they first adopted it.
Their first, their first go-round, they had more, and then they scaled back from then.
And so we voted to go to twenty-nine because we thought that was the, I mean, but again, that is just our recommendation, and it's going to be up to the, the council and the election board to come up with a proposal to say, well, how many do you want to cut in order to, to satisfy the fiscal concerns?
And I see that the auditor flew her hand up when she found the answer to the question that was asked, so Ms. Gregory?
Thank you.
For yours.
Sure, um, so as far as reversions, I, I mean, we can't rely on them, obviously, but we, from twenty-four to twenty-five, um, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars reverted. As far as cash balances, we have, Counselor Hawk, this will answer your question, we have been careful to ensure that there is a nice, healthy operating balance in the election fund year to year. For example, we ended, um, twenty-twenty-four at one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. We typically have about a million dollar operating balance in that fund, though.
So what would one-fourth of a presidential election be?
Can tell you total expenditures, um, give me one second.
You guys have it.
From our report, it was the total cost of a presidential election was one point two six eight million dollars, so a quarter of that would be roughly three hundred and fifteen, three hundred and twenty.
Math on the fly, good job.
Duly noted. And I'm going to circle back, because I know Counselor Wilt had a couple of questions related to the vote center, um, presentation?
Yes, um, your recommendations for early voting, I find intriguing, although I know it's a little bit separate. And you had suggested three sites at least ten days ahead, why ten, when we do so much more than that now? I'm just curious.
So it would, we would still have the, um, base of early voting, so it'd still be the twenty-eight days, but then we would add an additional three, the last ten days of early voting. So it'd be to add those, um, other three locations for other areas of the county who have suggested or said that they feel like there should be more locations besides just the one early voting location. I will say, for instance, during the presidential election, I got multiple calls from voters asking where the early voting location was in Elsville. So we started looking at that, and then I came into, when we were doing our public discussions within the community, that there were more people from around the community saying that they wish that there was a location on campus, for instance, one on the south side of town. And so we started just putting it in and gave them that recommendation, they don't have to accept it, they can accept it, so it'll be the election board.
Yeah, and in terms of ten, I think we, we wanted more than a week, which, which was how we ended up with ten, or we wanted two weekends, I believe. So that's why we ended up with the ten number. I think it was just a robust number to give us an idea, and I, I, I assume that we also had a hypothesis that there were more people interested in voting as we got closer to election, so in terms of traffic.
That, is that the trend?
Yeah, so the last week, most times the last two weeks, we have a high spike, um, in turnout those days, but then also we, um, reached out to other community, uh, counties, and most of them do the last two Saturdays, they start opening up multiple locations, or they just do the Saturdays. So those two Saturdays of early voting, they open multiple locations across their county.
Okay, that's interesting, because what I thought you meant by the, the three for ten days was, that was roughly thirty days, and roughly now we have a month of early, so I thought it was replacing the month.
Yeah, so it would still be the twenty-eight days of early voting at election operations, but then also opening an additional three locations the last ten days of early voting.
What is the logic behind the, the twenty-eight days of early voting versus more or less?
So the state has said that twenty-eight days is the, uh, for this that we can go out for early voting. I know that they did have some legislative, the legislation that went in that was going to reduce that, but it did not pass.
Okay, um, may I ask one more? Basically, um, are there specific things that the resolution that we are being asked to supply is supposed to say, or is it very general?
Yeah, you guys have a, should have a draft already, and I think it just says that, that you think it, it does not say that you, I think it says that you think it would be, that you, that, that think we should adopt vote centers. I think it says something like that. I don't have it in front of me, but it doesn't say any sort of additional fiduciary particular things now. I mean, it does say that you'll do whatever the plan is of the election board in terms of that, which would be part of the checks and balances of, of that sort of environment. So I, I do believe that it, it would, but I would say that, uh, I, that, that definitely being a bipartisan board, I think that particularly the Republicans are very interested in, in this, in this being very fiscally sound in terms of it. So I, I would say that, that, that I would be surprised if we went crazy there.
County Attorney Molly Turner King was the one that drafted that resolution, so.
Great, and that was the one from a couple of years ago, right?
I believe it was sent out in twenty-three, and that was the same time the commissioners received theirs as well.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so it's not specific to the plan or any of that, it's really just supporting the idea and supporting the responsibility that comes with the possibility.
Yeah, it's usually, actually, it's advised to go first, actually, because why would you do something if you couldn't pay for it? But we, you know, we're different. We did it our own way, we're Monroe County, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions related to vote centers for our Vote Center Committee people? Oh, okay, I'm seeing, shaking hands, so it sounds like y'all giving us all the information, so we appreciate it. Mr. Olin, it's nice to see you on this side of town. So, yeah.
Please.
All right, thank you very much. That was very much informative and appreciated, so thank you very much.
She's smarter than I am.
Right. Because I want to move this along, because we got some other stuff we got to do. I want to open this part up to have the fiscal conversation of our presentation that we've heard. We know that there is about twenty, either twenty, twenty-two, or twenty-nine vote centers, and we all have the amounts that they cost here. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to the fiscal impact? And I see a hand already raised, and I'll go with Counselor Deckard.
Thank you very much. When we first had that resolution on our agenda way back in twenty-twenty-three, Counselor Wilt was president then, I can recall at the time that, uh, one of those brief discussion items was, what does it look like? What's the, what are the details beyond just the term vote center, which can mean very little or very lot, or a lot of details? One thing that's come back is a fairly well-narrated, uh, set of options for us, and the goal, I think, uh, of having that discussion is that here in public, uh, you, and in the hearings that the Vote Center Committees had, and the listening that they're still doing, the discussion around the difference between twenty-two, twenty-nine, or lower than that, which we're not hearing, uh, has been done. hearing, has been done. And we even heard tonight that you could have 29, but if you've got one across the street, I mean, you could go down a few more. I think that having that kind of a robust discussion about what that looks like really was the goal for us from back in 2023. We, so if, if some cost savings assist with some of that, in addition to us having that kind of open public dialogue, plus reversion options, have a grant, I think that's how you get to the end goal for something that people are clearly talking that they want. In bipartisan examples, it's been done in a lot of different counties. So for me, that fiscal narration has occurred. I do want to put a caution here, and again, I draw from my old hat. When you talk about the right to vote and suffrage, you got to be really, really careful about not paying for elections. And I think early vote centers, counties would go down to very few and then they get in trouble with lines. And it won't be me and it won't be us that has that issue. It'll be folks like the clerk and Kylie and the election board that would deal with that. So here you've heard robust early voting in locations that are not just downtown Bloomington, right? We've heard campus. We've heard Eltsville. To me, that's starting to satisfy for early. And then you've heard the option to go 29 or maybe a few less or so. To me, that starts to get to make this pay for itself and that's half the battle that we've done. So I think fiscally, this is actually much closer than not in being doable for folks.
Thank you. Anybody else on this side have any questions or comments? Counselor Fidal?
Thank you. So I guess I'd be interested in other counties' data, right? What did other counties do to adjust their financial obligation when they accepted and implemented vote centers? Is there data somewhere on that that could be obtained or, and how did they function after they started using them, right? Did they get the results they were looking for? What was the impact after it began? So.
I was thinking similarly and just if we're wondering out loud on things. Ms. Stonebreaker mentioned that the, the other counties had started large and then maybe scaled down a little bit. And my question would be, is that because they were rightsizing or is that because they found it to be too expensive at first, you know? And, and kind of what, what's the logic there? And do we cut out that trial period by starting at a more, at a right size? Or do we go the route of 29? Which, by the way, is not that high compared, if you look at all that, all the ones we've had in the past. So I'm not supporting fewer or, or I'm just wondering out loud, as I do.
You do well. All right. Counselor Iverson?
Yeah. For me, I'm also concerned about the, the rising and shrinking number of vote centers over time, as Mr. Deckard indicated. But as you could tell from my line of questioning earlier, I think my greatest concern is that of compensation and staffing, the labor costs involved. I'm looking at the vote center report right now, the plan, excuse me, on page 15 or the PDF is page 22. The highest costs are for per diems, compensation, clerical personnel. And so we need to keep our eye on that. I think we're going to hear more about that. We, we hear about it every single time there's a long-term finance committee meeting, about how we need to keep our eye on inflating personnel costs. And I think this is no different. I think the, the plan itself is, is sound in that it clearly articulates the cost for those different labor costs, those, those lines for personnel. And I think we just need to keep our eye on that. Again, I'm, I'm supportive of this in, in a general, but those are my two main concerns, is the ebb and flow of centers and the costs that'll be associated and labor costs.
Counselor Henry?
Thank you, Madam President. I've mostly said my piece on this in my overextended initial remarks on item A, but I will say that this is the foundation work that we set up for vote centers moving forward if the election board reaches unanimity. It's, and it's not lost on me that there are counties where the Republican majority has supported going to vote centers. And so clearly, I don't think there's anything particularly unique or special about Monroe County in this equation. I think, in fact, we've done some amazing due diligence on the fiscal piece of this. In terms of the cost over time with workers, I think it's really important, the comment that Counselor Iverson brought up, but also to frame it in the context that we will have, I think, one election possibly with the vote center model at 29 possibly locations with something similar that we can expect from our current clerk's administration. Moving forward, we'll have a new clerk at some point, the current clerk's term limited, and we may have a different clerk with different ideas about how to compensate poll workers. That could be a very different equation down the road. So I tend to separate the compensation of poll workers separately in this, in thought process because we already kind of know what the compensation model is for poll workers right now at 29 locations already. That could change down the road depending on your perceptions about what, what civic duty is and volunteering on election day or what the state may compensate for high school students to work on election day, which they have in the past. So I hear all that commentary, but also think about, we will have a change in administration of the clerk's office, but hopefully that clerk inherits a, a system that the majority of voter registration offices use in the state. And we can, it seems like we're close. So thank you for that.
Thank you. I know Counselor Hawke, you just walked back in. Did you have anything to add to the conversation related to the fiscal impact? Okay. Thank you. Sorry. The only other thing, I guess my question, I want to make sure that I heard this and I'm looking to legal counsel over here to the table. It was just mentioned, hello, sorry to put you on the spot. The question that I had is, say, for example, council decides to approve or do a resolution and it goes, and maybe some, just thinking hypothetically speaking, because I just, I thought I heard this correct. Whatever the election board decides to do, basically we, we're basically cosigning on what it is that they say to do. So if for some reason there's somebody thought that we should have 20 vote centers, not just, again, speaking, and they say 29, what they do is 29 and that's it, right?
That's my understanding in talking to Molly. I did ask her this question earlier today. I'm not sure if this is directly on point. She did tell me that the resolution does not need to be passed prior to the adoption of the plan. It just needs to be submitted with the plan that they, endlessly. Obviously, the hearings, the second hearing is going to be on the 19th. The State Election Division has advised that once the election board adopts a plan, the council is required to find whatever plan, whatever they plan, unless it's modified by the board. I'm sorry, that's a little strangely word. So yes, so I think that it would be, I think that's the way that it would work. You wouldn't have to pass anything today, but that's the information I have from Molly. I've not gone into this in depth. So that's what I have here. I don't know if that particularly answers you.
So essentially what we could do is almost like a kumbaya resolution that says that we are in full support of a vote center plainly, and then they go ahead and do whatever or how much they want to do with the, however many vote centers they want to do.
That's what the information I have here.
Got it.
But again, I've not gone into it myself.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That was my big question. All right. Any other, any other questions or comments? Okay. So I'll go ahead and close out this conversation here and I just want to say that we have a big task and I definitely appreciate the vote center committee and coming in. We want to make sure that, you know, you were definitely heard and we heard you tonight. And we will continue to pay attention and we will work it out. So again, I will task council to think about things and hope maybe in the next meeting, that's something that we could discuss further in terms of putting, again, because our next meeting is on May 13th and the final meeting is May 19th for the second hearing. Okay. So I'll go ahead and close that out. I will say that we have been gone for quite a while. So just to kind of give our staff a little bit of break, I'm going to ask for us to recess for five minutes. So that means that we come back at 7:27 so that we can continue forward with the rest of the agenda items and move expeditiously with that. So again, we will come back at 7:27. I will task everybody, if you are in the audience talking, and council members, if it's 7:27, you will be called loudly to come back. So we'll recess for about five minutes and we come back at 7:27. Thank you. So we are going to go ahead and get this meeting started so that we can enjoy what's left of this beautiful evening or come back to finish up, I should say. So we have item number 10 on our agenda, which is boards and commissions appointment.
Counsel, I move to approve the citizen appointment of Andre Butler to the opioid settlement and application review board for a two-year term that expires on December 31st, 2026.
Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments from council? Counselor Iverson?
Just real quick, Mr. Butler has served as president of this body for as long as it's existed and we are certainly excited to reconvene this body to finish up some work. And special thanks to the Board of Judges for recommending Mr. Butler to this body.
All right. Anybody else that wants to speak on this particular appointment?
A question. Is this, is this gentleman related to the Pastor Butler, Minister Butler? What was his name?
We don't know, but.
Ernest Butler? I don't think so. Well, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know. So just let you guys.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay. We will go ahead and take a roll call vote because we do not take public comment on appointments. Sorry. Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Since I was told I'm not allowed to say pass, I have to say no. Because I don't know this person.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one. Okay. Thank you very much and thank you to Mr. Butler for serving on the opioid settlement committee. All right. Moving on to item number 11. Oh, boy. Which is the planning department.
Counsel, I move to approve the planning department's request and fund 1,000-0079 County General Planning, the creation of account line 30006 contractual and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $15,000 in the services category.
Second.
All right. We got a motion and a second and I see Ms. Jackie Jellin is online. Welcome. And thank you for your patience.
Welcome. Thank you. Yes, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen if that's okay. I have a short presentation just to go over the additional appropriation request. So thank you, council members, for hearing our request this evening. I'll just go through what our request entails and let me know if you have questions. I'm also joined by Tammy Beerman, our Assistant Director and Flood Plane Administrator for Monroe County, and Justin Roddy is also the attorney that's been assisting with the legal cases that are tied to this appropriation request. He also may weigh in on some additional information. So tonight, the request is for an additional $15,000 to the planning department's budget. This is so that we may be able to remove materials from two properties which are located in Steinsville. We, the commissioners, the county council and the town of Steinsville renewed an interlocal agreement, which is active from November 2024 until November 2029. As part of this interlocal agreement, the purpose and the impetus was to extend our ordinance protections to the town of Steinsville or our ordinance provisions. So we administer planning and zoning in Steinsville. What this means is that in return for this, they get our floodplain protections and if there is a flood or the event of a flood, they would be able to potentially qualify for disaster funding such as what happened, an event in 2008 that they did not have this interlocal in place resulted in no funding. So soon after that, starting in 2011, we've had pretty consistent interlocal agreements with the town of Steinsville. So we have two litigation cases that we filed because these cases are located in the floodway, which is the most restrictive area of the floodplain. So first, I'll go over the Taylor case. So on January 31st, 2025, we received an order from a judge that says, in part, the plaintiff, Monroe County, may obtain estimates from a third-party provider for the remediation of the subject property. However, any such remediation may not commence until 60 days from the date of this order. So that would be April 1st by our estimation. So the address of this property was 8281 North Sycamore Street. So this, we did receive some quotes or an estimate, which I'll go over in a little bit. This is the, this is a drone imagery of the property taken in October 2024 with assistance of the police staff in the town of Steinsville. Anytime that we go by this property, we have been requested and we do comply that we need to have police presence with us to review the property. So the Raley case is actually right across the street. And again, we received an order from a judge in part that says the plaintiff, Monroe County, or the signees, may remove the junk and structures from the property at issue. So this case has a further damages hearing on July 23rd, 2025. I will say this is a little bit of new uncharted territory for the planning department. Typically, we see this coming for cases that involve the Waste Reduction District. The Waste Reduction District was not involved in this case, these two cases, because with the town of Steinsville, I'm not sure that they have jurisdiction in the area. So the planning department filed the case primarily for junkyard issues, lack of permits, including a floodplain development permit. And this is just an aerial imagery of the Raley property, which is directly next door. So includes these two parcels. I do want to back up to say that the order that we have received would not remove the home on the Taylor property, but it would remove everything else. Whereas the Raley property, as funds allowed, we would be able to remove everything from the property. So I do want to just bring up that we do have national flood insurance, where we qualify for the national flood insurance program for the entire county. So when we spoke to the Division of Water at the Department of Natural Resources about this case, we wanted to know about what the impact would be had we received the order from the judge for both properties and opted to not go through with cleaning the properties and not getting the funding. So though only one property in the town of Steinsville as a whole has a flood insurance policy, the program also provides eligibility for the town as a whole to receive federal disaster dollars in the event of a flood and a declaration. Additionally, due to the active interlocal between Monroe County, FEMA could possibly disqualify the county as a whole from the NFP program, the National Flood Insurance Program and related disaster dollars. We did not have time to speak directly with our FEMA representative about this, so we were relying on our DNR division representative to give us this information, but we were told we could follow up with FEMA directly. And it's possible that we could be first put on probation if they found out about this and we would not necessarily be immediately disqualified from the program. And lastly, I want to mention that even in the flood event that happened in the beginning of April, it's clear that materials that are located on this property and anywhere in the floodway are moved by floodwaters and then, in this case, can get lodged under the nearby bridge that the county owns property very near in this proximity, which can cause more issues. which can cause more issues, both upstream and downstream. So I just bring that to your attention. So next steps, if the Planning Department does receive the additional appropriation, we would have to hire a third-party contractor to clean both properties. As I mentioned, for the Taylor property, it would include the campers and all outside materials, but not a demolition order for the home. The home has been determined to be uninhabitable, was previously subject to a fire. However, we believe someone, as of February of last year, was living in the home, though it had no water, no sewage. So this property does not have any septic or sewer. It does not have any active water. So the folks that are living there are, they do not have access to those things, and so it is a concern. For the Raleigh property, we would be able to clean the entire site. And we're not sure that their current, the Raleigh owner is not, we're not sure that they're inhabiting the site. So we reached out to three different companies. And we did so after talking to the Waste Reduction District, because they do this more frequently than we do. And we got an estimate or an hourly rate from a company called Veteran Hauling. They basically gave us the cost of trucks that would be able to haul the material labor costs by hour, the number of people they think would need to be used to clean up the property. They did a drive-by. And then structure removal costs, such as trailers, which cause, you know, need for skid steers and other equipment. So I want to state that we cannot guarantee, because we didn't get a quote, that $15,000 would cover the property cleanup in their entirety. And it's possible in a lot of our junkyard cases that people bring materials back on the property after they've been cleaned. So just a final summary that we're requesting approval of the $15,000 additional appropriation for the Planning Department. I'd like to see if my colleagues, Tammy or Justin, have anything they would like to add or if anyone has any questions.
Yeah, I'll just briefly add that I do work with DNR on making sure that we're in compliance with our local ordinance so that we can remain in the National Flood Insurance Program. And yeah, this one does have some large structures on the property, RVs and offense that could cause some potential issues if they were able to drift downstream during a large event.
Oh, okay. All right, so we're all done here. Okay, thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions? Council member Henry?
Not questions, but just comment. As a member of the Plan Commission, and you know, we had a discussion about this right before our meeting this evening as an executive committee on this request. I hope that the fellow councilors will move forward with the appropriation. I will say, this is a situation that's tragic and probably going on in other places in the county, no doubt. But because of the nature of this property sitting in the floodplain in Steinsville, it creates myriad ecological issues. If we experience a flood like we had on April 5 or anything higher than that in spring flood season, what you saw on screen will be in Jack's Feet Creek and on its merry way into the Bean Blossom watershed. This is not an insignificant situation there. I know that the audio is muffled in the room and some folks may have had a chance to hear. But the, I want to draw everyone's attention to the challenge of the National Flood Insurance Program, which was an issue that staff raised with us this afternoon. Because of the interlocal, we are tied to Steinsville. And if we do not take action to remediate the floodplain, it's not just the risk to the town of Steinsville as a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program, it could risk the entire county's space here, too. We are tied to the hip with the challenges there. I will say, I didn't see anyone from Steinsville board online. I was hopeful that Mr. Carter would be attending this evening to help explain some other details here. But I will say that the Plan Commission has an interest in what's next. If we clean this up today, we may be back here in a few months with the squatters that are in the property right now in Steinsville. But I have, after speaking with Commissioners Jones and Thomas on this issue, that, you know, the next steps are really to work with our county offices, Health Department, Sheriff's Office, Social Services in the community to really help locate these folks out of an uninhabitable space. This is not a habitation. No running water, no sewer, no electric. And people that are living in what you've seen on screen here. But the risk to the county environmental issue is real. The risk to the National Flood Insurance Program is real. And I wanted to deliver that message on behalf of Plan Commission this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Hawk and then Iverson.
Yes, I just know that the people of Steinsville have been working on this for a very long time. They thought they might be able to get it done before their, you know, Steinsville gathering where everyone is there for their festival. And that was last year. And so hopefully, we can help them. Because there's certainly, there's just not the revenue there in that small town to try to alleviate this problem. And that was before I understood the problem with the flooding and the dangers that could take. So this is, as you said, these situations could be ongoing in other portions of the county but might not be connected to the waterway like this is. So I hope that we will move forward. And Trent was out there helping us, and so was Peter with that, so.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Thank you for this presentation. Of course, I'm in favor of this and we need to get this done. I'll have a comment and then I have a question. First, the comment is, you know, as a board member of Beacon Inc., I think it's very appropriate, in what Mr. Henry just said, that not only do we need to remediate what's in our agenda here, but we also do need to include our community partners, our Monroe County partners, as much as possible in this situation. My question is to our Plan Department staff here with us tonight. You know, this is a $15,000 request of counsel this evening. You know, and do we have other similar situations that are in floodplains that are going to be coming to counsel in the coming months, even as, you know, Mr. Henry suggested? You know, there's going to be more rain and we're heading into the June months with the DROs and God knows what else.
Sure. So I would say that typically, we partner with the Waste Reduction District in other areas of the county aside from the town of Steinsville. So the Waste Reduction District is already getting these cases and these judgments and these orders. So they have a similar budget line of $5,000 for the entire year. They've already mostly expended that amount. So I do see there being an issue in the county with, not necessarily all related to the floodplain, but there's definitely junkyard cases in the county. And so if the judge is going to start to distribute these orders that puts the onus on the county to do the cleanup, it's definitely going to make us think twice about how and when we file litigation cases and trying to think forward as to assuming maybe what the judge might say so that we have a budget in place if we do need to clean up these cases. But I don't anticipate, aside from this not being an adequate amount, coming back for additional funds. But I don't, I can't say that definitively. But if the Waste Reduction District is involved in other cases, we could typically help, you know, have them help us as well with their budget to do this. And also say that this does involve a lien on the property with all of these. We're not sure that we would be able to fully recoup all of that, given that the properties are fully in the floodway. But assuming that they are, you know, passed on and someone wants clear title, they would have to pay the lien. So it's not necessarily an appropriation that is one-time spent. Hopefully, the funds are recouped if possible.
That's a lot to keep in mind. Keep us appraised. Thank you.
I will go, keep going down the line. I'll go with Decker and then Wilts.
All right, thank you very much. We began, I think it was Counselor Hawk and I, began taking complaints on this maybe a year and a half ago. And part of the thing that we said at the time, there were some quite animated social media posts. It's one side effect of social media. But part of what we said was, at the time, Commissioners, what can you do to assist the town on this issue? And now this comes to the council to say, "Council, councilors, you had lots of thoughts at that time. What will you do today?" I absolutely support this. I know that things can be difficult. But let me tell you what's even worse than difficult when it comes to figuring out what's going on on our property, jeopardizing your flood, your FEMA dollars, jeopardizing your floodplain, jeopardizing what goes into our water. I mean, all we have to do is go back to our PCB discussions and we can talk about water usage and what's one person's freedom or business or choice and another person's, why is that coming out of my faucet? The other thing I just wanted to kind of briefly say is, planning is notoriously very good at taking all of our constituent complaints that we get, where people say, hey, I'm living at such and such and I'm seeing things in yards that are looking like it's leaving, going from this being what someone wanted to being what someone's not managing very well. Now it's really affecting everybody and it's, it's looking, looking like crud. They're very good about taking those and trying to get people to move on that. I would worry if we didn't support this today, we'd be sending them the wrong message on that. And it's important for all the people in the community that try to keep up their things, take care of their things, make safe places and keep access for private roads and other things, that we send a message that this is part of being responsible for those things. And that's half of that, that effort.
Thanks, yeah. Trying to remember what my question was now, sorry. The, so I was going to ask about the liens, but it sounds like it works the same way as the Waste Reduction District. And so if, at some point in the future, there's a possibility, but let's not count on that.
I can speak to that if you'd like.
Sure.
So in these cases, we do have order from the courts that any cost that we expend, we can seek, act against the defendants. Whether we can recoup that, it would be a judgment lien, whether or not we could actually recoup that is another thing.
Okay.
And one of the properties, the Raleigh property, I would be shocked if the remediation cost was not greater than the value of the property. Perfectly frank.
So maybe, maybe you can answer this one, too. Is the reason, is the sole reason that this is falling to planning because of the flood zone or because of the agreement?
These were filed shortly before I took over. So the reason that I was told was that Waste Reduction didn't maybe have an agreement in their local, but they were filed as planning cases, as violations of the floodplain, and then also as Operation.
As what?
Operation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fidal?
Question I have is also about where the water actually ends up, right? If it's going downstream or whatever from this property issue, where does that water, is it just in this county the water ends up? Or where does it ultimately go?
Gulf of Mexico.
Tammy, do you want to speak to that? Yeah, I would just say, this does end up going into the west fork of the White River, which then connects,
Yes, I thought it might.
Eventually to the Ohio and such forth, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else that has any questions or comments? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, this brings to mind a conversation I had with the council administrator, she's sitting over there, with Angie Purdy, a few months ago, about what are the specific steps that a citizen needs to do when they, when there's somebody in their neighborhood with 20 junk cars and whatever, and they're seeing, no matter, no matter where you send them, they'll call one office, another office, it just keeps going around circle. And one of the things that Ms. Purdy suggested was that maybe we needed an actual diagram, I don't know exactly how she put it, so that we could tell the citizens that are calling us, I don't know whether you get these calls, I sure do, to say, this is who you call. So instead of just guessing, call the legal department, the planning department, the whatever. And they call everybody and everybody says, call the next party. So I think we could come up with a solution for our citizens who want an answer and we don't have an answer for them.
Thank you, Ms. Purdy. Sure, I did.
I will say that we do have a link on our website, on the OpenGov website, to file a complaint. The Health Department, the Planning Department, the Building Department, and Stormwater Highway, we're all in that form so that if someone files just one complaint, we can now better direct them to the right department. We're hoping to get Waste Reduction also on board with the system. And I think once that happens, we can take cases a little bit more as they come and maybe not, you know, give the runaround to anyone that calls. The issue is sometimes that we may have a little bit of a piece of something in our ordinance. And so, you know, it could involve, a lot of cases are multi-departmental cases. So we have one case right now that's similar. It's involving the Highway Department because there's vehicles on the right-of-way. It involves Health because there is no septic system. It involves the Waste Reduction District because there's trash everywhere, and Planning because they're using the property for trailers as a residence. So it isn't necessarily an easy answer to here to say, okay, you also have to talk to this person, this person. But if someone wants to file anonymously and they don't want to tie their name to it or they don't want to, you know, they don't want to create an account or they don't want to get on the OpenGov website, sometimes this is what happens. So we try to reduce that as much as possible. We'd be happy to talk with you, Marty, about that to make it easier for the public.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments from council? And seeing shaking hands, so I'm gonna take that as a note and then I'll move on to public comment. There's anybody here in the Nat U Hill Room that wants to make a public comment on this item? Please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing no movement on this, may we please have a roll call vote? Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you again, Ms. Jellin. And yeah, thank you so much and thank you again for your patience. We appreciate that. All right, moving on to item number 12. The Highway Department is here.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request in Fund 1197-0000, Stormwater Management, the creation of account line 30505, South Shore Drive, and to simultaneously approve additional appropriations in the amount of $685,000 in the services category.
All right, we got our motion and a second. And Ms. Lisa Ridge, again, thank you for your patience.
Good evening. So the first project that we are wanting to complete in 2025 is the South Shore Drive Bank Stabilization Project. We've been doing this in segments over the last few years. We do have a permit that will expire in 2026. So we want to go ahead and finish the whole, the rest of the project on South Shore Drive. We do this with some in-house labor and then also some hired-out trucking services. So that would be our goal for that project. The other project is the last portion, finishing the Stip Road/Mores Creek project. We ended up having to pay the final payment for Morse Creek after the first of the year out of that line. And then we have some due costs for utility relocations. We had tree removals. So doing the additional for that project will help finish that project this year.
Awesome, thank you. All right, any questions or comments from council? Looking over here to my left and seeing shaking hands to my right, okay. If anybody wants to make a public comment on this item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, because we all want to keep this show going, may we please have a roll call vote? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Fidal?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wilts?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.[1792.16]
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Now we move on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request in Fund 1176-0000 Motor Vehicle Highway, a category transfer of $2,400 from the services category into a new account line, 17301 Board Members Personnel Category, and to simultaneously amend the 2025 salary ordinance to include account line 17301 Board Members to receive $50 paid per person, per meeting, paid out in December annually.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
So we were just working to get this in line on how other board members are paid in the county, something that had been overlooked over the years. And then to also increase their pay to $50 a meeting if they attend versus the $25. So yeah, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. But we had already budgeted the amounts, we're just transferring it into the new line.
Sounds pretty easy. And, but I know sometimes we have questions, so looking to my left over here for any questions, looking to my right for any questions, seeing some no's. So then we will go to public comment. If you have a public comment on this particular item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote? Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request for a fund to fund transfer of cash in the amount of $4,000 from Fund 1169-0000 Local Road and Streets 2 8190-0000 Fairfax Road Safety Improvement.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Ms. Ridge, anything to add on this?
Pardon?
Anything to add on this particular?
Not really. We applied for an HZIP grant. It was a new program that NDOT was, did last fall. So we were awarded this project. So the, it's a 90, it's a 90/10. So I'm just trying to set up the line so we can do that project this year, hopefully.
Yeah. Congratulations on getting that award. All right. Any questions or comments to my right? Any questions or comments to my left? Nope. All right, public comment. If you are here in the Nat U Hill room, please come forward to the lectern or raise your hand via teams. Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote? Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. All right, item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the highway department's request in Fund 8190-0000 Fairfax Road Safety Improvement, the creation of a new account line 37416 Design, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $40,000 in the services category.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge, anything to add to this one?
Just the additional to have the project designed.
Okay. All right. Looking to my right for any questions or comments from Ms. Ridge? Nope. Looking to my left, still a no. All right. Any public comment that would like to, anybody that want to make public comment, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand via teams. Thought we had somebody. All right. Seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote? Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iv-
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you. And thanks again for your patience.
I know.
All right. Now, moving this council train going, we are at item number 13, choo-choo, with the Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request in Fund 4933-0000 PSAP Lit for an additional appropriation in the amount of $196,432 in the services category.
Second.
All right, we got a nice NPR motion and a second. Ms. Purdy, please go ahead.
All right, thank you and good evening. What this request is to actually kind of right, right-size the PSAP Lit appropriation. During the budgeting process, we used a placeholder, I used placeholder number, and failed to update that when the DLGF provided the rate information for us. This is just making it all correct. No additional costs to the county.
Okay. Seems straight to the point. But again, I know we like to ask questions, so just checking to see if anybody has any questions. And looking to my left, seeing none, looking to my right, and still seeing none. Public comment, if anybody would like to entertain us and have public comment on this particular item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand via teams. And still seeing none. Everybody seems to be outside looking at the hawks. Maybe please have a roll call vote? Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. All right, moving on to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request in Fund 4914-0000 Showers Building Operating, the creation of a new account line 30006 Contractual, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation of $3,000 in the services category.
Second.
All right, we got a second. Motion and a second. Ms. Purdy?
Thank you. This is, this is, how do I describe this? First of all, we actually only need at this point in time 2,500 if you want to amend it. The 3,000, we just revert back into this particular fund. This is a non-reverting fund. This money is for our jail building corporation. And the reason that they are still in existence, because they came about for the original facility, is that, because I checked with Mr. Cockrell, I said, why are they still here since that's over? But we have actually requested that they remain on because we knew with the upcoming jail build, we would need their services. And so this is just keeping them kind of an active entity that the county will be able to utilize as we go further down the road.
Okay, all right. Counselor Iverson, and then I'll go Counsel Henry.
Counsel, I move to amend my motion to reduce the amount from $3,000 to $2,500.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion about this motion? All right, all those in favor of amending this, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Or Henry?
Thank you, Madam President. Who are the members, current members of the board?
Currently, I believe as they currently stand, let me see. There's Mr. Zook, Sarah Rogers, Diane Gregory, and Joe O'Connor.
I won't, I guess, belabor time. I'll do some work my own, just to learn a little bit about how they got there and who appoints. It seems like they've been there a while.
Been there for quite some time, actually. And my understanding is that when the bonds are done for the new jail, that is when the appointments to this particular board and their directions will be defined, because right now they're just basically treading water, is my understanding. And so that's my, that's my understanding. And so Counselor Henry, I would recommend talking to Jeff Cockrell, because he is the brains of this particular.
Yeah, it may just be my own ignorance. I mean, it seems like the board's been around a while. It's been kind of on a warm base waiting for something to do. And here, 30 years later, there's something to do called Build a New Jail. And we went through a CIB process and obviously appointed board members for the convention center, but I just am kind of curious who these folks are that might be guiding our Justice Center development and how they got there, yeah.
Right. And that was a, that was a question I had, and that is not what they will be doing. They will be making the payments for you.
Holding the bond. Yeah, got it. Okay, a little different.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Iverson? And then I'll come over here to my left.
So my question to you is, what is the role of Carmen Parker Law Firm? Are they represent the, do they represent the corporation?
That's my understanding.
Okay, all right.
That is my understanding.
All right. Counselor Wiltz? Did you have a question? I swear, I thought I saw your hand go up.
I did.
Okay.
I'm just, I have so many questions. And I'm kind of like Counselor Henry, maybe I should just get a meeting with Mr. Cockrell and find out a little bit more about how this works. Do you happen to know, though, are these annual appointments to this committee?
I do not. I don't think it has changed in, in centuries. I mean, I know it's an exaggeration.
I know, I know. But, I mean, I'm looking at their minutes from 2023 where they approved the minutes from 2022 and reappointed themselves and adjourned. And I'm like, wow. I mean, no, but do we pay them $100 to do that? Oh. Okay. But they have to, they have to do that because they're paying, or they used to be paying off the building.
You are asking the wrong person about this particular entity, because I have had all these questions and I, I asked them somewhat, but I don't, it's, the answers are not retained. They're clearly not staying in my head because it doesn't make sense to me. I was expressed concern about many things, and that's when I was advised that during the bond process, it would be clarified. That does, however, not negate the fact that we've been invoiced for $2,500.
One quick, to that point, we've been invoiced for $2,500 for meetings that have already taken place. And the agreed upon amount was $100 per person per meeting. Going forward, is there an ability to look at these terms and figure out?
Absolutely, which is what I have been trying to do.
I mean, we need to pay if we, if we're obligated.
We're obligated.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Deckard?
I, I was just gonna say, it probably would be helpful to have Jeff Cockrell come in and just talk to us about it. My recollection was that this was the entity when we went to the Justice Building that assisted with that, the Commissioners, Commissioner Zitlow at the time and others to do some of this, the, the management of, of bonds and the, some of the hard process of getting those things done. And this is a carryover that for the existing Justice Building, but it would probably help for having a Jeff Cockrell explain what that is in relation to our new new opportunities and as this end of cycle sort of continues, what their ongoing operation is with us.
If I may?
Yeah?
Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just noticing on the, an August 12th letter from Paganelli, I think is how you say it, the law group regarding this particular issue. In the second paragraph, it says, upon receipt of the 2,500, it's going to be deposited into the corporation's trust account. Disbursements will be made for unpaid expenses as authorized by the board, and then the remaining balance will stay in there to be used for anticipated costs to continue to operate the corporation in good standing. That is in the letter that's in your packet.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Iverson here and then I'll circle back to Wiltz.
There's so many questions here. I don't want to, you know, beat a dead horse, belabor this conversation. Oh, I
I don't, I just don't have the answers for you.
I know you don't, so I don't want to, Kate, I don't.
I'd like to move to table this item till the next meeting, which is May 13th.
Second.
May?
Yes.
Apparently, this letter is dated August 12th of 2024. So they have been waiting, apparently, for a while for this money. And for that, I am very sorry, but two more weeks is a drop in the bucket.
Absolutely.
Good point.
Absolutely.
All right, we got a motion and a second. And again, I don't think this is for you at all.
No.
I think this is, the person that needs to be here to answer the questions is not here. And so, sorry to put you on the hot spot. Yeah, so, okay, all right. All those in favor of the motion to table this until May 13th, 2025 meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. So, again, we'll bring this back, item B, with questions on May 13th. All right.
And Jeff will make it seem just like, oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I apologize that I'm not able to do that.
It's, it's okay. It's okay. All right.
Can I ask a question? About the tabling. So will we make sure that someone that we would like to talk to will be here? How will that happen?
I will make sure that Jeff knows.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. All right. Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request in Fund 8106-0000 Rural Transit, an additional appropriation of $1,437,881 in the services category.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Anything to add about this one?
This is the pass-through grant?
Uh huh, rural transit.
Yes. And how much did you say?
That's the total of the two grants.
Thank you.
Yeah, two different grants, that's the grand total.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Yes, so Mineral County Services is a pass-through for our Area 10 Rural Transit Program. And they are the recipients of two grants, a 5311 and a 5339. The 5339 being a capital grant which allows them to purchase vehicles. And so what this, all we're asking for you to do today is to appropriate that fund so that when they submit their claims to the state and to our Otter's Office, we can reimburse them promptly.
Sounds like you've told us everything we need to know about that. But again, we might have questions, so looking to my right over here, some gentlemen. Any questions? Seeing head shakes and looking over here and seeing no questions. All right, so now we move to the part where I say, if you'd like to make public comment on this particular item, please come forward to the lectern here in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand via teams. And then we also come to the part where I say, it looks like we don't have any, so may we please have a roll call vote? Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. All right, item D.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request in Fund 1,000-0068 County General Commissioners, an additional appropriation of $120,000 in the services category.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, Ms. Purdy?
Thank you. What, this request is because we needed to, we needed more money than we had appropriated in our other insurance line, which is the county liability line and all of those particular workman's comp. And so we borrowed, if you will, from, um, the developmental disabilities. And now we are requesting that that money be put back into that particular account.
Alright, any questions to my right? Any questions to my left, Counselor Wiltz?
I apologize if I, if this was in the packet, um, it was a big packet this time. Um, it was, why did we not have enough, um, money for the insurance expenses? Is that just?
It's just kind of a, um, what we, what I have been doing, reached up till now, is it's just been a a relatively educated guess as to what we need. Um, and then, um, I find that I'm wrong. So, so I'm trying very hard to get, um, kind of a hold on our, um, this, this insurance expenses that we have. We add, when we add more vehicles, then it changes the cost. When we add more staff, actually, uh, law enforcement officers, that increases the cost. We had been behind, um, not intentionally, um, we had been behind in our workman's comp as to what we were supposed to pay, because workman's comp actually did a kind of revisit of it, and then they sent us like a forty thousand dollar bill. So it's those kind of things that, that happen and this is why I'm here.
So, these are several different kinds of insurance, are they related?
Oh, one entity, if you will, well, that's not actually one entity, because we have travelers, we have, um, oh, can't remember the, the computer software, um, insurance company. We have, um, but they're all managed under a brokerage that, that gives us these invoices, and then we were able to get them out. And then we, the tech commissioners pay for, um, majority of the expenses, but then there are some other departments that do pay some of the expenses. Like, for instance, um, Highway will pay some of, some of their, um, expenses, same with Airport.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
So my questions, I'm not, are not fully formed, but they are around, how should we maybe improve our guestimates?
That would be on me.
Um, well, I mean, I'm not trying to be critical about this, I'm just.
No, no, I don't take it, I'm not taking it critically, um, at all.
Okay.
Um, I actually have an appointment, a meeting with our broker, um, May thirteenth, I think it is. Um, and we're going to be going over our claims. Part of it is, um, we, last year, at the very end of the, the year, we changed brokers and, um, that's what that we needed to get caught back up on. So, um, they have a really nice spreadsheet that they're, um, providing me, and we're gonna sit down and, and try to look at what these things, how to best forecast for the future. So, it's, I'm not taking this at all personally, it's, it's just a fact.
Okay.
I can do better.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other additional questions related to this item? Alright, in case public has comment, you can also make public comment on this particular item by raising your hand via teams or coming here to the lectern in the Net U Hill Room. Feels weird saying that name. Alright, and seeing none, Michelle, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel? Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Alright, next up, item E.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request in Fund one thousand dash zero one six one, County General, County Buildings, an additional appropriation of one hundred thirteen thousand three hundred two dollars and ninety-eight cents in the services category.
Second.
Alright, motion and a second, Ms. Purdy.
Okay, well, this is, um, uh, clearly, this was my fault. Um, it goes back, um, a number of years, but, um, we realized it last year, I think it was, after we'd already submitted the budget. And so, um, what this will do is get the expenses associated with our Justice Building, our Curry Building, Fiscus, um, Johnson Building, as well as our parking garage, um, and cleaning services for Highway and the E O C. So, these different lines actually provide a lot of service to our, for mostly our justice, um, uh, buildings is kind of how I look at them. We have our justice and our civil side, and these are mostly our justice-type buildings.
Okay. Alright, looking over here to my left, see if anybody has any questions? You sure? And then I'm gonna look over to my right, and we got one, so Counselor Iverson.
So since this deals with security, maintenance, and janitorial, there's no interruption in service, right?
Correct, absolutely not.
Okay, this is just a mathematical error and no one's had to, like, reduce their hours or anything like that?
No, no, nothing like that.
Great.
Any else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, um, if you would like to make public comment, please come forward to the lectern here in the Net U Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you very much, and thank you again for your patience and sitting through. Alright, and long, most to the finish line, y'all. Um, we are on item number fourteen from the council office.
Counsel, I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, amending the twenty twenty-five council meeting schedule to move the budget adoption date up by one week from October twenty-first to October fourteenth.
Second.
Alright, we got a motion and a second. Michelle, would you like to talk about this item?
Yes, um, so, uh, the office, um, staff met with the auditor, Auditor Gregory, and we always plan out our calendar with regards to the next budget year. Uh, so as we were going through it and looking at the dates and everything, we discovered that we had a little bit of a gap with regards to, um, adoption. And normal, so what I did was, I, um, set the dates just like we had in the past and was working backwards. Um, and then, but we didn't realize when I set the original calendar budget. So, um, but I didn't realize when we finally sat down, uh, and looked at the calendar, we had a kind of that little gap of a week that we could move things up, and we could actually get the budget done and in a little sooner, but it also gives us a little more time to ensure that we have the correct numbers, you know, and that we're submitting, once you have approved it, off to, um, uh, D L G F. So this is just writing that, giving us that extra bit of a week with our budget planning, so.
Okay, alright, seems understandable and appreciate the auditor's office working with council office on this. Um, giving you plenty of time in October is definitely something that's needed. Um, and also because we have Sophia Travis Grant Committee, um, items as well that will make this more intense. So hopefully this can alleviate some of that. Alright, anybody have any questions, and it looks like you do, so Counselor Iverson, go away.
In the past, uh, the, the office, the council office has been, uh, really kind of pushed up against it to try and get everything ready on time. Does this make that even, does, does that make it worse? That we're, that we're taking away this week where you could be finalizing everything?
No, um, it actually, if, um, it just keeps us on that same schedule, it just allows us a little bit longer to proof everything before we submit it to D L G F.
Alright, trying to protect time here.
Alright, anybody else have any questions about this particular item? Okay. Um, so if anybody would like to make a public comment on our calendar, please come forward to the lectern here in the Net U Hill Room or raise your hand via teams. And still seeing no movement, Michelle, may we, can we do this by voice vote, or do we have to do roll call?
It's a resolution.
Ah, that's right, alright, so maybe please have a roll call vote?
Certainly. Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Henry?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Fidel?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yep.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Alright, thank you. And drum roll, we are now to item number fifteen, which is Counsel liaison updates and comments. Um, stick to, to ask council members, and I will go start into my left with Counselor Fidel, if you would like to make any comments or liaison updates.
My color-coded chart ready.
Yes.
So.
Go for it.
So I just want to report that I've had several conversations with employee services about numerous things, and that's been an active, um, office these days, shall we say. Uh, Sophia Travis, uh, has had some initial meetings of their, their group, uh, B E D C Board Meeting. I went to recently, um, the attendees role-played what it was, how B E D C processes and entertains inquiries. So we had like four different ones to consider, and that was a, a good process to learn how that works for them. The Monroe County Women's Commission is active as usual, I think, as I remember serving there. Um, they're working on, um, they talked about the wage gap in Monroe County between men and women. So currently, it's eighty percent of every dollar a man makes is just the women's salary. Uh, women in Monroe County businesses, uh, they're, in twenty twenty-two, there were fourteen percent that were women, and that were four hundred and twenty businesses out of three thousand fifty-eight total for the county. Um, they're doing a women's build coming up in September. Um, they did work with the Gender Studies Department at I U and spoke with the librarian about, and are gathering additional items for their review to do their, their final gender studies, uh, work they've been working on. Uh, they're working on a web design camp, getting close to finalizing that between now and the end of the year. Um, they're considering doing a health fair at the Fall Festival in Ellisville. And next month's topic that they do, they do research, it seems, on each month, and next month's topic is living in penalization. Um, I did go to the Cheryl Munson plaque dedication on Saturday, and it was a lovely event, including the Easter party, so I'm glad I got to take a part of that.
Thank you. Going on down the council lawn, Counselor Wiltz?
The, hello, there we go. Did the Waste Reduction District planted lots and lots and lots of trees today?
Yay.
Yay. Out near the old landfill site, um, and I am not on the Sophia Travis Grant Committee, but we got an email that was, said that we were still looking for people, is that correct? So I just wanted to make sure that we said something, maybe I'll take it away.
But it could be reiterated, and it probably will. Alright, keep going.
Thank you very much. Um, I had the pleasure of also joining council colleagues at the Indian Creek, um, uh, Association dedication of the plaque there at the park, uh, to Cheryl Munson. It was very nice, it was also good to catch up with folks about some of the plans that they've got, uh, for the area, and I am hearing discussions in townships about, uh, the effects of legislative changes and what that might mean. And so we'll keep our eyes peeled there as well. I did want to bring something up, uh, I run it by council here, um, not an agenda item, but sort of a, to, to get, to get a sense of council on this. Uh, Christopher Imge, uh, as a citizen today, made the comment about, uh, politicians and other public servants representing everybody, and I think it was a really good message. Uh, a mantra that I, I kind of found as a goal for myself. And incidentally, uh, last year when I was council president, we had, uh, partnered with the city to support a congressional earmark request that they had made regarding, uh, booster pump station project work that they had done. And at that time, we sent a letter to Congresswoman Houchen, universal, or not universally, unanimously, uh, bipartisan, whatever you want to call it, supporting the city's request, uh, for a congressional earmark. Uh, I believe it was around five point two million dollars to assist that booster station. Unfortunately, because Congress, um, did not get that bill done in a timely way, now it's back before it. And I would recommend for things like this, that we authorize our council president to either sign such supportive letters or that we indicate here that we'd like to support the city, uh, in getting that, uh, request made. It doesn't guarantee that they will get it, but again, it brings money here to the community for such things that we need. And I would hate to see that go to another community because we didn't ask. And we can't partner, walk, and chew gum, as council president says all the time. So I don't know if counselors have thoughts on that, but, uh, Counselor Fidel and I got that from the city, and we think that, uh, this is something that should, we should move forward on. Any, not to, is there anyone that's got any objection to us at least uh, authorizing a letter over either president's pen or somebody's pen in making this request again?
I do not object.
It's, the only decision I think to be made is, do we, as last year, have all the signatures, which I think you, Michelle, could do electronically, um, and would require maybe a check-in with Counselor Hawke, um, because she's not present? Or do we change the format from the, the version we used last time and have the council president sign on behalf? And frankly, it does not matter to me either way, I'm in favor of it.
Either way.
Yeah.
I mean, I would just say there are obviously two new members. Um, what is procedurally, what, how did you procedurally do it? Was it a resolution of the council vote? I mean, was it a, a motion? And how did this all happen last time?
It could have been one of three ways. It could have been brought up in a meeting, as I recall, it could have been sent out from Kim in an email. It could have been, um, um, made an announcement such as this. So, yeah.
And also, the letter from Jonas at the city, um, also states that the submission period for this letter, and he realizes he's late asking, ends Friday the twenty-fifth, so that's this Friday. So if we're gonna do this, we kind of need to get on it and have it happen.
Okay. And that happens from time to time, that something that, you know, needs or is asking for an endorsement from council happens in between meetings, and, um, something has to be done to support or not. And we've handled it in different ways, depending on, I think, mostly the preference of leadership.
And I want to say that, uh, you have done it both ways, where somebody's made a motion to allow the president to sign a letter on the council's behalf, or you've, someone's made a motion to have a letter, uh, put together for signatures and to utilize the electronic signatures on the council's behalf. So, I just need to know which way to go.
Personally, I like all the signatures myself, because I, not that I think it's not bad for the council president to do it, I just think it shows the way to the council better if we all chime in.
Anybody else have any?
Good to me.
Uh, we will, it sounds like somebody needs to make a motion.
Madam President, I make a motion that, uh, a letter be prepared for members' signature electronically or in person at members' choice, supporting the city of Bloomington and their booster pump station project, uh, similar to what we authorized last year.
Second.
Alright, we got a motion.
I would, I would be happy to, uh, forward. I would be happy to uh forward the correspondence that I received and Trent received to Kim, would that be proper, and then we could go from there, because it shows what the letter states.
All right, all right. So all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sound. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
I was just, no, I was just gonna say I had the privilege, woo, speaking uh at the graduation ceremony of Leadership Bloomington Monroe County, four different teams came up with four different solutions. It's good to see these leaders doing their thing, and I told them, we need to do more things, keep at it. So congratulations, graduates.
Thank you for doing that. All right, moving down the line.
Thank you, Madam President. I have three things today. Uh, the first is, on April the twelfth, uh, we were very privileged as a community to welcome Michael Hicks from Ball State, uh, an economist to town. He gave a talk called Tariffs, a Blessing or a Curse for Hoosier Jobs. Uh, and I I would encourage my uh uh council colleagues to uh watch this CATS recording. Uh, in it, he talks about a a lot of the impacts of the uh federal tariffs are going to have some pretty disastrous effects for the Indiana economy. I know we've been very focused on Senate Bill One on the state, but at the federal level, uh, Professor Hicks talked a lot about uh the increased unemployment, uh, the decreased growth, and uh probably what's most impactful for this community are the long-term effects uh of this trade war, uh, regardless of how long it lasts. And so I would encourage folks to watch that. Uh, Professor Hicks uh gives a really good analysis, and um thank you for CATS for recording that. Uh, the second thing I'll mention is, I'm really looking forward to the long-term um Finance Committee meeting this Thursday. Uh, now that uh Senate Bill One has been signed into law by Governor Braun, I think there's a lot of things that we need to kind of get under our belt, including the maximum levy growth quotient, uh, the new rules on local income tax, and of course, property tax. Uh, we know from the fiscal note that Monroe County is gonna lose uh out on thirty-seven, uh, about thirty-seven point one three million dollars uh in uh in revenue, uh, and so that's gonna be a pretty big hit, and I'm really excited uh to learn more about what exactly that's going to mean, and I would encourage folks to to watch uh Councilmember Crossley uh as she chairs that meeting on Thursday. The third and final note that I'll I'll say is that I was honored to be able to speak at the Earth Day celebration this past Saturday at Switchyard Park. Uh, I talked a lot about what Monroe County has done with climate resiliency, uh, building on the eight core pillars of public health, natural systems, recreation, business resilience, infrastructure adaptation, community preparedness, agricultural sustainability, and government leadership. And uh, it was a great crowd, it was a good day to be out there, and I was uh really happy that I was joined out there by Monroe County Parks and Rec, uh, as well as the Monroe County uh Solid Waste District. And so we were able to talk to a lot of folks out there about what we're doing in terms of resiliency in the community, and just uh want to wish everyone a happy Earth Day today.
Thank you, Madam President. We all know the last Harry Potter novel was the longest. I don't know why you put me at the end. This should be fun. Um, nah, I'm kidding. Uh, I I would have a update for liaisons from the Emergency Management Advisory Council on um this week. I had a chance to meet with our EMA and talk through some stuff. Um, the flooding we had on April fifth was not small. Um, folks in Ellisville may have seen some of the flooding, obviously, the downtown there in temperance, uh, about two feet of water in a flash flood situation. I wanted to raise awareness to council that while those images are always very um, you know, shocking, we are a flash flood county more than a, you know, a long-term flood county, and um, you know, what wreaks havoc for a moment there just dissipates just as fast. But in order for us to qualify for disaster relief as a county, you'd have to have a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in damage for state-level disaster funds, and FEMA threshold is six hundred and forty-three thousand. Uh, the EMA is pursuing state-level disaster relief. Uh, it's not clear if we'll be as eligible as other counties were that experienced flooding on April fifth, but it's a, the the message here is that there were seven water rescues uh there on the April fifth flood, um, people trying to traverse water. So just, you know, if it's flood, your road's flooded, you probably can't cross it in your car. Um, just sagely advice there. But, you know, we've been in spring flood season for a month now, it's gonna get weirder before it's a drought season in Monroe County, so be careful out there. Um, I wanted to mention all that because of an urgency that I put to the community and my fellow council members. Um, there is in the Federal Register, a request from the US Department of Homeland Security to make comment on the future of FEMA. Uh, the Federal Register comment period is over on May fifteenth, and the um, the government has asked for a series of questions of people's experience with FEMA, and to um really get the information as they're trying to determine the future of that organization, which celebrated its forty-sixth birthday, and was founded by President Carter in nineteen seventy-nine. But um, we rely on FEMA for a lot in our community. It's not just funding our EMA in part, it's the training for every first responder in our community on how to integrate in times of crisis, and how to integrate neighboring counties in our response. It is the money we rely on. Steinsville had a a center opened up in twenty twenty-three for tornado response that brought Small Business Administration money to our county. There are a lot of ways that this agency is really important for our safety here. I'm happy to send a dear colleague email to everyone to contribute to commentary to the Federal Register on this. It is really important. Um, without it, we we are going to be in a severe uh challenge in our community for emergency response. Um, on a more positive note, I I did see the uh cards here from uh Township Trustee Rita Barrow from Van Buren Township. Uh, Saturday's a big day in Monroe County, uh, on April twenty-sixth, Saturday from two to four. Van Buren Township is opening up its community center that's been worked on by the Township Trustees. That includes a food pantry that needs stocking, and so if you have an opportunity to come out to the far west side where I live, um, you know, I hope that we will see you there to help stock the food pantry, bring some extra cans, help out some neighbors and the township level there. Um, I I was very pleased to see the plat, uh, the postcard up here tonight for that. Um, that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, last but not least, I'll I'll keep it brief as much as possible, because I got some breaking news for y'all. Um, so the one thing that I wanted to say is, it was very great to be invited to, down to the Indian Creek area with fellow council colleagues to, again, honor um the late and great Counselor Munson with a plaque uh at the park there to commemorate the work that she did down at Indian Creek, and how much she still continues to mean to this community. So definitely was very happy um and honored to be there. Speaking of um Counselor Munson, we all know that her baby was Sophia Travis Grant Committee, and we all met about a couple of weeks ago, and we have another meeting here on Friday, May ninth, and we are looking for a community member to be a part of that. So if you want to serve your community and do some good work, um, we politely ask that you fill out an application, and applications are gonna be due May second, because there's gonna be an interview process for that. So if you go to co.monroe.in.us and go to the county council page, if you scroll down, you'll see committee member application, fill that application out, and um we look forward to all the applications again, and we would like to have those applications due by May second, so we appreciate that. Um, again, as Counselor Iverson mentioned, we do have the Long-Term Finance Committee meeting that is happening this Thursday, starting at eleven o'clock, and really interested to hear some of the feedback that we will get. I definitely would like to ask um about some of the things that we discussed, such as the KSA's uh this evening at that particular meeting, so hopefully we'll be able to discuss those and maybe have a deeper conversation back on May thirteenth. So, a lot of food for thought here. Um, since I would like to deem myself the unofficial um hawk for the uh what's happening in state government. Remember how I told y'all a couple of weeks ago that April twenty-eighth, our lieutenant governor was supposed to have a conversation uh down here at uh the warehouse? Breaking news, since we've all been up here, um, the IDS has reported that that town hall has been delayed until May nineteenth at six PM. Additionally, it's been moved to Ellisville Town Hall. And I do know that we were asked, we were told, um, through the governmental affairs uh person for Mr. Beckwith, that we were supposed to get invitations. I don't know if my invitation got lost in the mail, or um, maybe it's sitting in a draft in an inbox somewhere, but never got it. And so we, the people, for the people, um, should be able to have the uh the good, the bad, the ugly, and uncomfortable conversations with people, and so I guess we'll just keep paying attention, and since the invitation didn't get extended to this particular council, maybe not six of us, maybe. Um, but um, I look forward to going on May nineteenth at six o'clock at the Ellisville Town Hall and having a conversation. Also, that's really small, so I don't know what is happening here, but um, you know, if you're gonna make convers, or have, you're gonna make rules, then you should also be held accountable to things. Um, and if we got things that we gotta cut, like SB one, and it seems like the state has their findings that they have to do as well, we'd like to have a conversation. Again, we just want to talk, you can come outside, and you can get in your souped-up car and drive down to Monroe County, and we'll meet you anywhere you'd like to meet. So, that being said, would, I just, again, just thought that was really interesting to see um that, you know, promises that were told to us obviously were not kept. So I'll be in contact with um the Governmental Affairs Director, and I'll report back on May thirteenth. So without that further ado, last but not least, I just want to say um that I really want to continue to express, and I know this is weird that we keep doing this, but I do want to express our much appreciation and gratitude to council staff and um our legal department as well, because they have been going through a lot, um, personally and professionally, and they continue to keep showing up. And so we just definitely appreciate all the hard work and dedication that they keep showing despite all things that keep circling around. Um, so I just want to end on that note, because it's a happy note, and it was a long meeting, but again, we all knew that uh that was going to happen, but we got some conversations that needed to happen, and some conversations that will continue to happen on Tuesday, May thirteenth. And so with that, we are now adjourned. Thank you.